I'm going to call this meeting order so we can get started. Okay, so the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I think as of this moment, I don't think there are any changes that we need for the agenda. Does anyone have any information different than that? Okay, great. So we'll consider the agenda approved. Onto general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the council on a topic that is otherwise not on our agenda tonight. And if you have something to say, and this is true generally sort of later on, if you have a comment, if you would say your name, where you live, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes would be great. So any general business and appearances?
I have one.
Yes? Yeah, is any comments from the public? Welcome.
Good evening. Laura Rose, Prospect Street.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Certainly. Laura Rose, Prospect Street. It's really concerning item 12 not being a special election and why it is an appointment discussion because it is a vacancy and unless it's...
So if you have a comment on that particular item, then we'd ask that you would save your comments to that time when we take that up.
My question is why it's not like Berry where they had a vacancy and they held a special election so that, for example, the third district could vote.
It's the way our charter is written. Berry's charter is different. Berry's charter calls for caucus of the district. Ours calls for appointment until, so there will be a one-year election in March. There'll be, so the rest of the term will be filled in March by a special election. This appointment is only from now till March.
And I'm just going to caution, you know, making a lot of executive decisions in private chambers in the meantime because I don't feel that there's proper representation and that there could be potentially a hostile work environment for council members that don't agree. So just the whole trend here is concerning and that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or statements from the public on items that are not on our agenda? Oh, yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, go ahead.
So we have a new, an announcement really more than a comment. We just started a brand-new program to recommend, to recognize employees that sort of go above and beyond. And we have a, there's only a small little $50 bonus that goes with it, but it's really the recognition. And this, this is nominated by fellow employees and then we select. And this is the first time we've done this. We'll be doing it monthly. And our first recipient is Lieutenant Doug Jasmine from the fire department. And we had five nominees, which was great. So fellow employees nominated five different people. But Doug had done an awful lot of work. We have to buy new power stretchers for our ambulants, which the kind that lift up, and I'm sure those guys can describe them better than I can. They're going to be mandatory next year. And so Doug got ahead of the game and he found a way to save us $34,000 on the stretchers that we're going to need to buy. So it would have been a $93,000 purchase, so he saved us 37%. So as I said, we had great nominations, but that was our team's choice of Doug. So we'd like to recognize Lieutenant Doug Jasmine as our above-and-beyond employee recognition winner, first one, and thank you for your work. And he is a above-and-beyond kind of guy all the time anyway. But this was this particular, I don't know if the chief or Doug wants to say anything? Maybe describe what it is you actually bought better than I did.
Yeah, well, no, I'll let Doug describe that. But what I will like to say is Doug's one of our lieutenants and along with his normal duties of going out on the ambulance and fire, he is, he handles, as an operation, he's an operations officer. So in that role, he takes care of ordering all our supplies. He does our building maintenance, our vehicle maintenance. And yes, he saved us a ton of money on these stretchers, but he does that routinely, day in and day out. Repairs to vehicles that normally would have to be sent out, Doug fixes. Repairs to the building where we would have to hire an electrician or a plumber or something, Doug makes those repairs. So on the course of, he probably saves us that much every year just on the work he does on the vehicles and around the buildings. So along with this, I also want to congratulate Doug for, you know, he definitely is above-and-beyond employee.
Yay.
Thank you, Chief. So to give you an idea what I saved everybody, the power load, power stretcher system allows us as ambulance personnel to pick up 800 pounds. Now, no one pounds 800 pounds, right? Some of them are close to 400, and it takes up the four of us to lift that person up on an ambulance cot, put them in the back of the current ambulances. Where this system, it's all battery-operated. We get you on the ambulance cot, we hit a button, up comes the stretcher, loads it up. And then the system, which sits in the back of the ambulance, comes out and lifts the stretcher for us. And it's rated for like 900 pounds. It will pick it up and we just push you in. This is going to reduce the amount of back injuries by lifting heavy patients. And this system will be able to go from ambulance to ambulance and ambulance to ambulance for as long as you guys here have an ambulance service. It's transferable. And it will not cost the city any money to move it. Normally, one system is close, just the load system, is close to $65,000. By transferring it automatically, you're going to save every year because it's going to go up like 30% every year on cost. So when you buy a new ambulance, you have to buy a new system. Now you won't have to. So we're hoping this is going to reduce all the injuries and cut down on the workman's comp claims. Yeah, all right?
Right. Well... Thank you so much, Doug. And I'm so glad that we have this program in the city now. I think this is a great start. Thank you. Congratulations.
Well, I'd like to give a tip of the cap to Cameron Niedemeyer, our new assistant manager, who thought this up and championed it.
All right, any further items for discussion for general business and appearances? Okay, all right, so moving on, we have the consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move the consent agenda. Move the world-record-short consent agenda. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Just dive in for a sec on something that's going to be passed around with it is just another sheet on a, something you approved October 30th. I guess there were two copies of the same sheet or something. It was a grant resolution, so it just needs to be signed again. Any of you wonder what the heck that is? That's what they...
Thank you. Okay, so we have an appointment to make. There was a vacancy on the Complete Streets Committee, and after advertising, there was one application. So I don't know if Jay Dayton Kreitz is here, but if you are, oh, okay. All right, is there a motion regarding this appointment? Go ahead, Connor.
Yeah, I'll move to appoint Jay Dayton Kreitz to the Complete Streets Committee as an alternate.
Further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a second? Thank you. Thank you. Further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. And thank you to Jay Dayton for his service. Okay, moving on. So next up is the community fund update. And I know there are some folks here from the community fund, so welcome. If you would introduce yourselves and then take us through this.
I'm Ron Wild. You won't have that.
Nope, that's fine.
I'm Zaki.
I'm June.
Katie Sternberg.
And we have another member who's probably going to pop in and join us soon, Amy Cunningham.
And I encourage you to pull those microphones over closer so you can be heard. That one works too. You're good with that one, yeah.
Okay. So this is our annual appearance before City Council to present our total grant-making recommendations to you for the Montpelier Community Fund. And we sent a memo and a list of recommended grants to you in advance, and we want to just talk through a couple of points on that memo and then open it up for any questions or discussion that you all might have. So this year for fiscal year '21, our total grant recommendations are $130,150. It's a little bit less than last year, and it is less than the bookmarked figure that was originally in Bill's budget. There's a couple trends that we just wanted to note. The number of grant applications that we've been receiving have been relatively stable over the past number of years, so that's not changing very much right now. The percentage of applications that we're recommending for funding are similarly remaining stable, 85% this year, which is in line with the past several years. We received 40 grant applications total, which is the largest total ever, number of grant applications, and that totaled $190,870 in requests. The average size of the grant, of the approved grant declined slightly this year. That's another number that we track. These are largely small grants, so numerous small grants. This year, that average grant size declined to just under $3,000, $2,830. And the reason for that was the absence of one larger grant application in the pool. Central Vermont Home Health and Hospice did not apply. And so last year, their grant caused the average grant size to be larger than it is this year. And then finally, we took a stab at breaking down the grants by category, just another new way to look at this total. You can see on the pie chart in the memo that we sent to you that Human Services accounts for the biggest percentage of total grants at 35%, with arts at a close second with 33%. And then other grants falling into the Humanities, Environment, and Education categories. And of course, it's a loose categorization, but it's just interesting to see, you know, where are the dollars going? Let me just turn to my other members of the board to see if there's anything else that people want to present. Okay. And otherwise, we want to turn it over to you for any questions or discussion.
Well, just to start off, I really appreciated this analysis, you know, looking at the trends over time, you know, with the requests and then the percentage breakdown. I thought that, I thought that was also very interesting and really helpful because I think that also said something about, you know, potentially our priorities, you know, that this is where we're spending our money. I think that's, it's a, it's a good piece of information to have. And then I did have a question in the chart above that. The city grants to nonprofits for the five-year funding trends. Just in that FY '21 category, it's got some parentheses that say like, "Applied," "Community Fund," "Grant Funding," "Recommended." Is that just applying to like in the numbered years further to the right, or is that, does that apply to FY '21?
It applies to FY '21.
It does, okay.
So for instance, for the three organizations where it's noted that they applied and grant funding was recommended.
Right.
That's for this year. And they're listed in that table because in the past, they had gone to the ballot.
Okay.
For various items. This year, they did not.
That's helpful. Thank you. And then I, perhaps I missed this, but so the North Branch Nature Center is listed down below. The People's Health and Wellness is listed down below. I didn't see Good Samaritan Haven listed down below, but maybe I'm missing it somehow?
Let's see, look at our list. Oh, they didn't apply. Oh, I'm sorry. My memo was wrong.
And I, I guess that's, that's also just, I'm making a mental note of that too because of our larger conversation about the homelessness, well, budgeting and task force and...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
That is incorrect.
No worries. All good.
And I think there was a prior, was there a prior year, am I remembering correctly, where they had perhaps forgotten to apply? I feel like I remember that.
Last year. And we thought that maybe they would go up to the ballot.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, and I think on their end, it's just, it's an oversight.
Sure.
You know, it's a small organization.
Yeah, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay, great. That was my only...
It's worth touching on that point that we reach out to all previous applicants. We actually send them a copy of the application and we actually send out a reminder of the due date a week, 10 days beforehand.
Yeah, and this year, the first time, at least since I've been involved, we actually did a story in the bridge. So we did, we, I think we garnered some, you know, new applications that we saw from the memo. So we tried to hit up the forum and all of the different ways that people are accessing.
It's true that we use the address that we had on file from the most recent application, and for a lot of these organizations, those people change.
Yeah, fair enough. Any other questions? Glenn?
Yeah, thank you very much for all of this. And kind of along the line of the conversation, have you seen, let's say, a better awareness among the organizations of the timeline over, over the course of the last few years with the reaching out and, and like people? I think that there is some confusion about the schedule in the air, and it feels like, I know at least a couple of organizations that have had trouble getting their applications in on time. Is that improving, would you say?
Overall, I think so. I mean, there's always, there's always a couple situations every year, right, where, you know, as Ron mentioned, perhaps people turn over, you know, small organizations that are volunteer-run. But the schedule, I mean, our deadline has been pretty consistent within a couple of weeks for days, right, for several years now. I also think part of the confusion that happens sometimes is because people are applying literally nine months before they're ever going to see a dollar from the city, right? And so like which fiscal year are we talking about, or, you know, and they're applying? That's all extremely, it's confusing for me, let alone for the applicants. But overall, as far as like the deadline goes, I think that we're being pretty consistent and it's fairly well-known.
Donna and then Lauren, I think.
I do thank you for all this information and the meetings and the work you do. It is more confusion than just applying for nine months ahead. You're reporting on the year that's just finished. You're in the year you just got money for, and you're applying for the year ahead. So it's three years, and everyone's FY year is a little different. So it is complex. But you deal with it well so far. You've been very flexible, so thank you.
Oh, Lauren.
So I just had two questions. One, is it, and it might not be concise, in which case I can just go read, but it being my first time through the budget, is it easy to describe the criteria you use and in a relatively concise way? Or again, I'd be happy to...
Yeah, so, you know, the, the criteria that the city council set for the community fund are very broad. You know, it's about the health and well-being, the vitality of the city of Montpelier. You know, I think that there's a line in there about, you know, basic human needs perhaps. But overall, those criteria are very, very broad. We have felt that it has not been our place to be more prescribed about like the values or priorities regarding demographics or issue areas. So what we have done is look at the quality of the application and to our best ability evaluate the program in order to understand the effectiveness of the grant and how those dollars would be invested. You know, at the same time, these are also really small grants, and so, you know, we also attempt not to overly burden nonprofits, you know, when they're having to fill out multiple pages, multiple pages for, you know, maybe a thousand-dollar grant.
Yeah, and just one follow-up. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around. So, you know, you estimated about 35% goes to Human Services, so there's, there's this budget, and then we also have the recommendations of the homelessness task force and other human services and just kind of how that intersects and how, you know, what need you see these grants filling. You know, Good Sam could potentially get funded through both, it sounds like, and so on. So how, you know, seems like, are there, well, ways to be clear about, you know, the...
Yeah, go ahead. If you want to address...
I was going to say, we, there is a question in the guideline, in the application form, asking if they receive any other city funds, which doesn't necessarily disqualify them for this because they may be in fact in, you know, a consortium or in, operating with other institutions to get some funds from other agencies. Frequently, we have three ways of, that applicants can apply. They can apply for general operating costs, they can apply for program costs, or they could apply for a specific project. So sometimes the, the, the volunteers will be receiving city money for a specific project, and so they're, they'll come to us for a program, which is larger than just a specific time of the project. Or they'll say, and I think we're one of the few branding organizations that actually do give money for general operating costs, which is very important for most of these. They're small and struggling, and this helps them do, actually, one of the criteria is the extent to which the applicant can raise, has raised, can raise, or can leverage funds from other. And these funds that do support general operating help them reach out through that.
Thank you.
I'd just add to that that typically, really until this year, this has been the bulk, the entirety of our human service funding has been two agencies in the community that provide those services, either through this fund or those that go on the ballot directly with a petition. And so this, you know, the ask of the homelessness task force, as we've been talking about, this is kind of an expansion of the city's role and responsibility and how we want to handle that. So we haven't had this crossover before.
Great. Donna?
Will you entertain a motion?
Yeah, do we need a motion? I'm just going to, I, we do, okay, sorry. Thank you. Yes.
Because I'd like to make a motion to approve the funding for the Montpelier Community Fund for $130,150 as requested.
Second. And to these, awarded to these.
To those, yes.
Listed. Okay, great. There's a motion, second. Any further discussion? I just want to say thank you all for your time and dedication. I am just very impressed with your, your group, your, your work, and we're so grateful. So, yes?
I have a just curious question about the council. So community fund board is very happy to have been the guardian of the front-end meter money, $1,000...
Oh, yeah.
$30, $1,300. I'm just curious how you do the math on that.
Well, of course, that's also brand-new, and I'm glad you mentioned it. I forgot, I have not been in the office all day, so I would have had a note on that. Actually, one of the ideas we, one of the suggestions I have, I don't think council will allow, is if there was, if there was another agency that was next on your list or whom $1,200 would have funded, perhaps you would consider just adding, you know, taking a look at that and see what you would have done if you'd had $1,200 more. Maybe there is it this year, but it was raised. People put money in meters or made donations for this purpose, so I don't think we want to hold it and set it aside till next year. If we can use it, it'd be great. So give that some, we can talk some more about that.
Okay, great. Sounds great. Great, okay, so, yes, Donna?
Well, now I made the motion. My iPad and I don't always get along, and it didn't want to give me the last page. So these are all your applicants that you're awarding? And I don't see Lost Nation Theater on there.
It should be.
So I'm having trouble with it, so...
It's there.
I thought I was just approving your recommendations, but, okay, great. I was just...
It's there, it's under the arts.
Great, great. I can't get that page.
Lost Nation Theater has a, is recommended for a grant of $7,000.
Yeah, it's for their youth program. Thank you.
Oh, $7,000, that's right.
I just thought I should be due diligent and look all the way through, and I couldn't get it to go. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussions? There's been a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your work.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm actually going to switch up the agenda here a little bit. I think there's a number of folks here for the winter parking ban ordinance amendment, so I thought we might take that up next, just, you know, out of respect for all your time, if that's okay, Ricardo. I know that skips, skips you. But there, I'm pretty sure there's a...
If you don't want to go home early.
Yeah. So I'm going to turn this over to...
Sure, and I, and we've got the chief rallying the troops here. But we've had a couple of public hearings on the suggestion that we add two areas of the city into the permanent ban as opposed to the intermittent ban. And after the last meeting, we heard a lot of testimony from residents that would be impacted by it, and so we tasked our folks to go back and take a look and, and come think about a way. So we have a recommendation, but I don't want to steal the thunder of these folks if it's going to be included in theirs, or you want me to just... So I, what we're going to, what, the end game of what you're going to see is that we are going to propose to make no changes to the ordinance for this winter with the exception of expanding the zone at the bottom of Prospect Street, so to allow parking there where it's banned. And so everything would stay the way it is, and what we would choose to do is on, when we have, one of the good suggestions we got was, was there a way you could have a ban for a few days in these tough locations? And we couldn't really figure out how to make that work through an ordinance, but we do use the emergency police order, the signs that we put in. So we use them on Berry Street, we use them on Langdon Street. So we said, why don't we on Sibley and Prospect and anywhere else for that matter where the, the, the snow is creating too much of a problem, we'll just put emergency notices in, so it might be no parking for three or four days until we get that cleaned up and then, and then assess that at the end of the winter and see how that worked. And then if we're going to have this conversation again, if it didn't work well or did, we will be doing that in the good weather, when people have plenty of time to make plans and listen and all that stuff. So I think the point about changing the rules in the middle of the winter certainly resonated with our staff, and, but we also wanted to make sure we had the safety component. So that's, that's going to be what we recommend, but I do know that these folks did a lot of work, took some pictures and measurements and ran, so...
I think we're, I think we're just as happy to...
To not show them all.
To not show everything. If anybody wants to see them, they can come along. I will say, I do want to shout out to our Public Works Streets crew because immediately after the last conversation, they started reverse plowing, going down or up and turning around, coming down, changing the blade so that it pushed the snow away from the area that typically got very overwrought with snow and shortened the width so that emergency vehicles were having a hard time. So that, it should be a case where over a longer period of time, we're able to keep that snow at bay. And then the incidence of just putting out, you know, notices for one, two, or three days, depending on the snowfall, will be fewer than they would have been otherwise. So, and that was really, I think that's really the result of some changes that have been made prior to my getting here and how we operate and interact with the crew down at the garage. So that was really helpful in our ability to sort of agree to this approach.
Great.
Yeah, we met with Dan Perry. He's a supervisor, one of the pile supervisors today, and he thought that was a real workable solution on Prospect Street. Unless we get these 12, 14, 15-inch snowstorms, then it's not going to be possible. So then we would have to put out those temporary until they had an opportunity to get up there and clean that area out, which, which could take a couple of days, but, and the same on Sibley Avenue, yeah. There's, there could be a possibility where we would have to put out some temporary no parking until the crews can get up and clean it up, but otherwise, I think it's a workable solution.
That's, that's great. Jack?
Just as parliamentarian, I was going to suggest we...
Open a public hearing?
Open the public.
Okay, thank you. That's a good call.
Yay, Jack.
I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Thank you. And having said that, is there anything further from you both at this point? Okay, great. So I know there are a number of folks here who are probably interested in this topic. Any comments from you all on this proposal? Or really, non-proposal, I suppose? Yes?
I'm Heather Correia. I live on Sibley.
I'm Heather Corey, I live on Sibley Ave, and I was just wondering how, would it be paper notices on the cars, or would we get like an alert on our phones?
What we do now on Berry and Langdon and others is actually, we put the signs right in the snowbanks. Those, you've probably seen them, the emergency no parking signs, and they'd be posted right there on the street, right in front of you.
Are they like sandwich boards?
No, they're posts.
Oh, they're posts, oh, they're on, oh, I've seen those.
They just get posted right into the, in sticks, right into the snowbank, and it says emergency no parking. And then we remove them when the snow's removed.
There's some in front of Main Street School right now, they got put out today, because that's...
Got you. Any further comments or questions? Clint?
I just want to thank the staff for checking through all of this, and all of the public as well for coming out and for spending so much effort commenting and writing and thinking through the possibilities. I think that was, in some ways, a model of group decision-making, and it is not always smooth or rapid, but I feel like we're balancing needs well in this result, so I appreciate that. Thank you, thank you all.
Hi, Thomas Moore, Prospect Street. I'm not going to gripe.
[laughing]
I'm actually going to say thank you for addressing this situation and looking at ways to solve it. So, I just want to say thank you for doing that, and, you know, this year we didn't have that much snow yet, but last year was really bad, but it looks like you're going to be on top of it. So, no complaints, you know, I just want to say thank you, and, you know, keep up the work for us, and just wanted to recognize that for you.
Great, thanks.
All right.
Thank you. I do have one question. Bill, one of the things that you said was possibly with the exception of spaces down at Prospect Street?
So, the bottom of Prospect Street, as I understand, is currently in the permanent winter ban. Is that right?
Yes.
And so the idea is we would take those out of the winter ban, because that had been an alternate place, that we'd suggest that people could park.
Yeah.
So that we would include, so we would take those on. I hope we have the language for that.
Well, and so we're not proposing that tonight?
Well, that would be part of this, but I haven't, I don't have the stuff in front of me, so no.
Right, we do have the language for that, so, so there is a change to the Prospect Street parking, it's actually an improvement. We're adding in parking from Northfield to School Ave. So, and we do, we do have the wording for that, so I think we need an approval of that.
Right, so that would be, you've had your reading, so you would just, that's the only amendment you would make to the present ordinance, everything else would stay the same.
Okay. Okay, that, any further comments on just that part of it, because that would be a change? It seems like a welcome change.
It gives the folks, if we were to have to put out the temporary no parking above, it gives those folks an opportunity to park down below.
Yeah, exactly.
It gives them a place to go, fairly close to.
Yeah. Okay, so, I think we, any further comments from the public? Any further, okay, yes, welcome.
Stephen Cohen, Prospect Street. I just echo what Tom had to say, yeah, I appreciate everybody being amenable to working through solutions as opposed to just calling a full stop on any situation. This street looks great right now, so I appreciate, yeah, the additional effort of DPW. I did notice on the front porch forum post that DPW put out, when was that, last parking ban? Was that earlier this week or late last week?
We did have something posted earlier this week.
Yeah, I noticed it said on there that there's a full ban on Prospect Street, so just in the future, should just check that out. Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Donna?
Do we need to read the wording they have into the record for John, our secretary?
Yeah, if you could fire that off to me even, just real quick over email. Can you, is it possible for you to do that now? Do you have it?
Now would be good.
And then it would be attached to the next hearing?
Well, you wouldn't need a next hearing, you've had two hearings on this topic, so you could just say, you could just move to amend the ordinance with this language, approve it tonight, and no one has to come back to any more meetings, except us.
Well, I'd make the motion if I had the language.
Donna, you've got it?
I hope so, hopefully.
Okay.
Heather Corey, I just have one more question, and if this goes forward and we use the signs to do extra days for plowing, and you said you're doing that for some streets like Berry and Main, is that also just for nighttime, or should we expect that we would stay off the street during the day too, in those areas?
That's a great question. I typically, when we put those signs up, it's when they're, it's bad enough that it has to be daytime too.
Yeah.
But, you know, honestly, I don't think we parsed it, like, oh, here we go.
It just says a police order no parking, so it is not that specific unless we have to add additional messaging to that.
Right.
And the reason for that is so they can get up and get it cleaned out.
During the daytime, usually.
During the day, they can get up.
Okay.
If it's banned during the day, we can clean it up faster.
Yeah. I was just wondering what to look for.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We'll only do that if absolutely necessary, if we get up there and we find it, emergency vehicles can't get through, or the plows can't get through, then we would do it, but it's, it's mostly for cleanup, is why they do it, yeah.
Donna, how are you doing?
Sorry, I am, I have so many emails with prospects, I'm just trying to make sure that I have the right one here.
We could close the public hearing.
You could close the public hearing.
And then we could actually move on, knowing that this is basically what we can do.
Then we can get it.
Why don't you do that?
The wording will be just, with the exception of Prospect Street between Northfield and School Avenue. That's what the wording is going to say.
Yeah, I don't think they can vote on it without hearing formal wording though in the meeting. I mean, you can't vote on a concept.
No, I agree.
Okay, so why don't we go back, finish it up?
Right, and move on to other business. But is anyone here going to not vote for this, so the people that don't want to stay?
Do you trust us?
Well, what I anticipate doing...
I mean, they're welcome to stay, but I'm happy to have people that are...
So, any further comments on this?
That's it. That's it.
You've got it, okay.
You're going to get it in just one sec.
Great.
I will read it out loud.
I'm just going to highlight it, but then...
Well, you read it out loud to us, and then they can make the motion, and we can have...
Here we go.
Okay, so, the proposal is to...
Into the mic, please.
Areas where parking will continue to be allowed are, one, both sides of Prospect Street between Northfield Street and School Avenue, and two, the south side of Prospect Street between number 35 and number 51.
And is that the ordinance language, or is that just an email describing what the ordinance language is going to be?
That's the email describing what the ordinance language is going to be.
Okay.
Is that sufficient?
I don't think it is. I think what it should say is, we amend section whatever of the ordinances to provide such and such. So I think we, my sense is we probably don't have sufficient information to do this tonight.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen revised ordinance.
Is the ordinance number listed in our format and our agenda? My iPad won't, let me get back to it, I'm sorry.
Right, it was 10-714, it's in the winter ban, but oh, the specific section, I don't have that section.
What if...
So why don't we sort that out while...
Unless we just took like a five-minute break? Do you think you could do it in five minutes?
Yeah, go on to a couple of...
Because I would love to get this done while people are here.
Can we?
Is that, because I don't think it's really very hard.
Yeah.
Right, Jack, does that sound sufficient to you?
Might be, yes.
Take five minutes, get that language together. I think we understand the sentiment of what we're going for, and then we can move on. All right, so let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back in five. Okay, so, we're going to call this meeting back to order, come back from our break. So we have the language. And Lauren, would you like to read what you have there? For the, for language, this is the amendment.
So, the existing language in section 10, 714, under night parking restrictions, reads Prospect Street except on the southerly side, beginning at .200 feet, et cetera. So, I've proposed, starting that Prospect Street, except between Northfield Street and School Avenue, and on the southerly side, beginning at .200 feet. So the added words are just between Northfield Street and School Avenue and the existing.
Okay, is there a motion?
I move we adopt that language.
I'll second it. Okay, before we go any further, any further comments on this from the public? Okay, I'm going to officially close the public hearing. There's a motion in a second, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you, and thank you to the public for all of your time, and thank you staff for all your work on this as well. Okay. All right, so moving on, we are up to talking about Confluence Park and funding for that project. Welcome, Ricardo.
Thank you. Hi, Ricardo Erickson with the Vermont River Conservancy, and I am here to request some funding in this budget that you're working on now, to be allocated for the Confluence River Park, the next phase, which we are calling Phase Three. Phases one and two were funded by Vermont River Conservancy through grants that we acquired. And we are now at the point in which we could benefit from a partnership with the city, with an investment in some funds for this phase, as well as staff time. So the request that we would like to make is for $20,000.
And this is a project that we have been discussing for quite some time, and would be a city-owned project, and...
Right, I don't know how much background...
Well, just for the public's sake, and...
Yeah, so briefly, you may recall, somebody, when we first presented the budget last month, we had a list of items that had been identified as priorities, and one of them was Confluence Park, and I think I said something like, we don't have anything, we didn't receive anything from Confluence Parks, we haven't addressed it in the budget. Well, we had, and somehow in our confusion, we missed it. So, they did provide us timely requests, just to be clear, and we've looked at this, and we believe we can find in, we can readjust some funds in the capital plan for $20,000 and make that work, we'll get the specifics for it. And in fact, as soon as this sort of came up again a couple of weeks ago, we immediately did that. So we'll have next week when we do the meeting, we can show you exactly how to be reallocating the capital plan, but, so we think we can do that without having to raise the budget.
Donna?
So, the $20,000 you're talking about from the capital plan, but there's two others. One is parking revenue, and one is alternative transportation fund, which is the same source, parking revenue.
Yes, that was a draft budget that I had worked on with Kevin Casey, and was not able to ground true that with him prior to it going out to the council. So, consider that an over, a draft budget, and we do know that that's the expense, the expenses are going to be totaling around $97,000, and the income side is a budget at this point, a draft budget, and we will need to work, and that's where we would like a commitment from the city and staff time as well to work in, on that funding. A lot of the funding sources that, as we move towards construction, we're ways away from that, but as we move along in this process, it's really important to, a lot of funding sources to show that there's a strong partnership between the city and VRC in acquiring a lot of these funding opportunities. So, so that's where I want to work with the city on defining that budget and those income sources.
So, tonight you're only asking about the $20,000?
Exactly, that's what we're asking for, for this budget.
And to be clear, they're introducing that to us, obviously it's still part of our, you know, I don't think you need to vote on it, on this item, it's a budget request. I think it was just because it was new and coming in, we want to make sure that Ricardo had a chance to answer your questions and make the presentation.
Good, great. Any further, oh, yes, go ahead, Lauren.
Well, I'm excited to hear, it sounds like we can try to make it work, since this is a great project, and really appreciate all the work that's gone into it. So if the $20,000 is allocated and some of these other funding sources don't come through this year, would you anticipate spending that to continue the work that needs to be done to move the project forward? If that's money that needs to be there for a match, would you potentially hold on to it if grants didn't come through, or how do you just anticipate spending it over the next year?
Right, we'd like to be, I think this is what you're asking, but we'd like to be more confident of the income sources before we sign a contract with the designers to, the next phase, just for background, is a lot of ground truthing. We have a conceptual design that's in the design world considered 10% complete, we're looking to get to about 85% complete, which is just before being shovel-ready, and so this next phase will require a lot of that surveying and site work, and so we would be contracting that out. And so before, we would want to have, we would want to have about 75%, say, of the income sources secured, or that we would feel confident about it before we sign that contract with the firm.
Okay, Donna?
So, I'm glad you brought us back to the conceptions, what we have now is 10%. So this is Phase Three, are you seeing four or five phases? I don't...
That's what Vermont River Conservancy is calling Phase Three. In my mind, we had funding for Phase One, which was the initial, a year ago, we presented to you the first concepts, and then Phase Two, I found funding for, and that was to take that first concept in and have a huge public engagement process, and then get, have some more options, narrow it down to that one final concept E, that we consider the final conceptual design. And, now I forgot what your question was.
What are the other phases?
What are the other phases? So this is Phase Three, so four, five? So, so this next phase is going to get us to about 85% completion of the design phase, and then that, there's that final push, and that'll be, that last 15% will be permitting and getting us to the point where we're shovel-ready. So, if you consider that Phase Four, it would be a shorter phase, I anticipate, and then the last phase is construction. So, we're more than halfway there, we're getting there. This, this next phase will be one of the longer phases, it's a lot of this, there is a corrective action plan on this site, and we will need to seek an amendment for that. There is a lot of surveying, and this, this will be more time-consuming, and maybe less exciting and fun, but necessary in order to get us to that shovel-ready phase.
So, I'm going to put you on the spot one more time. So, for the net, between now, which rightfully say your minus will take longer, and Phase Four, so are you thinking a year, a year and a half, Phase Four, and more money needed?
Right, right, so, I can't say when I, I'm not sure, these projects can go on, and especially where it is a brownfield site, and we, it's hard to say, but we anticipate this phase going through, best-case scenario, being completed by the end of this year. And then, and then that would bring us to 2021. Let's say, best-case scenario, construction could begin in the fall of 2021. That's if, like, you know, hiccup-free, smooth process. And then, so, and that's where I'm really starting, starting to think ahead to that phase, because that will require significant funding, and that's where a lot of the grants that we were looking into, and the funding sources that we were looking into, looked for that municipal partnership, and, or... And, or the municipality actually had to apply for the funding themselves. So that's where, that's why we're stepping into this more of a close-working partnership in this fund-seeking phase, as we look ahead to the construction phase.
Thank you.
Great, any further questions for Ricardo? We don't need to take any action at this point. Any further questions? Great. Thank you, Ricardo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, I suspect that there may be a lot of folks here for the, sorry, Mike. Maybe switching around the agenda. I suspect there may be some folks here who are interested in the council appointment that's listed right now as item 12. Because now that we have a vacant seat, we need to figure out our process in moving forward. If there's no objection, I'd like to move that item next. Does that sound okay?
It's fine.
Fair enough. Okay, so with this item, Bill, do you want to introduce, or do you want me to introduce?
I can, I'll do my best.
Okay.
I don't have any say in what you decide to do. Our charter calls, so, because there was a question earlier, and which I think was a good question, is why isn't this a special election and all that kind of thing? So the charter says that when a person resigns their seat with more than 90 days left on their term, and in this case, Ms. Hill had like a year and 76 days left on her term, the council shall appoint a replacement, but only until the next town meeting. So in this particular case, the council would appoint until March. And then there would be a one-year term on the ballot for folks in that district to elect. So it's a fill-in seat just for, you know, January, February, basically. And then, and then there would be a one-year. And because Councilmember Hutchinson is not running for reelection, there will also be a two-year seat on the ballot. So in District Three, there would actually be two, there will be two seats on the ballot. There's one for one year, one for two. So the council, but the charter does not prescribe at all how the council makes that appointment. So it's really up to the council just to choose whatever process or criteria that they want in doing so. And I, and over the years, I'm not going to go through them all. Over the years, there have been several different methods used, depending on the circumstances, whether, you know, it's going to be a full year, or just a couple of months, and those kind of things. So I think, I mean, the council is free to do as they want. And obviously, I work for the City Council, so I have no say in how they pick one-seventh of my boss. But they, they can, you know, presumably, they're going to discuss tonight how they want to go about doing it, and then set that process, and then at some subsequent meeting, actually make the appointment. But I could be wrong. Maybe they're just going to appoint someone tonight, I don't know. That's the introduction.
Well, I guess I'll start, and then be interested in having a discussion about this. So my, as we don't have any prescribed process that we have to go through, my recommendation would be that we go through a normal appointing process in which we are not appointing anyone tonight, but rather, we ask a candidate to get 25 signatures, as they would potentially for the ballot, go through the regular application process, as we would ask for any other person who was being appointed to a committee, like we did earlier this evening with the Complete Streets Group. So filling that out as well. We could talk about having like a letter of interest. Sometimes it's useful to sort of know that, maybe that's captured in the the online application, but sometimes it's nice to just have a personal statement from someone about why they're interested. And then beyond that, I mean, this is an appointment. I think another factor that's at play here is the timing of it. We could, you know, aim to appoint someone at the next meeting, but that's a very tight turnaround. If we wait till the meeting after that, that's, I believe, the 23rd, and I think that's the last day we can vote on the budget. So, and then there's only two meetings in February before the election. So I just want to zoom out for a second to say that, I will just personally say that it seems silly to me to have to appoint someone who will be in office for approximately two meetings. And I think that was more or less the, also the sentiment of those who drafted the charter. So I would love to see us take up some charter amendment language before, ideally sometime in February. I realize that's too late for us to get it on the ballot for March to be voted on. But at least it's this council who has firsthand experience with like, why the current charter language is problematic. So just putting that on people's radar, that we may, I will be interested in changing that language. The, so I guess I'll leave it there for now. What I'm holding back on right now is I think it probably would be appropriate for us to say, like, what are we looking for in a candidate? And maybe that's a separate question potentially than the logistics of it. So I would love to break this into some parts. One is, what are we going to require of a candidate? You know, like, are we talking about 25 signatures, letter of interest, or nothing, whatever? That's one part of our discussion. Another part of our discussion is what is the timeline? And then a third part of the discussion is what are some criteria? Before we get into the criteria part of it, any comments about the first two, either the timeline or the requirements? Or Donna, you look like a good senator.
I'm just a little puzzled, because you went on as if you didn't make the other statement of a tendency not to appoint someone. And I guess, to me, that's sort of the first decision, because I feel two meetings is not rightfully fair to the person. And so I would, I would vote not to appoint someone in this short time span.
My inclination is also there, but I think we are compelled by the charter to appoint someone because of the word "shall." Unless we want to just, you know, say
Two meetings?
I know, I know, I hear you. I think it's kind of silly, yes?
I think we're required to make an appointment. As I started looking at this, as soon as I learned of the potential vacancy, I think we have an obligation to do what the charter tells us to do. And so I think, I take the statement that says that the council shall make the appointment to be mandatory. And so I would be in favor of appointing someone, even though it seems like it's kind of a pro forma thing with regard to, I do have some thoughts about the process, too. I don't know if you want to respond to what I'm saying before I do that.
I do. Because it talks about at least 90 days. And so it's not going to be vacant 90 days, because the election comes before 90 days. So that's how I read it. And you lawyers have a different point of view.
But it doesn't say 90 days before the next town meeting. It's 90 days left on the term, which she did. Okay, does that make sense? Yes?
And just to further that little line of conversation, I believe, in my mind at least, the changes that we would make, we might consider making to the charter are precisely that.
Yes.
90 days to the end of the term, or the next annual election, so that we don't have to appoint someone for two meetings.
I think you could actually just say till the, 90 days left, until the next town meeting. Because either way, it's, that's the cutoff.
Right, right.
Okay. Yeah. Connor, and then Jack.
Yeah, just a question, what are the next two council meeting dates?
15th, which is next week. And then the 23rd, which is a Thursday. It's the only Thursday council meeting of the whole year. And it's because we have to be within so many days of town meeting to vote on a
It actually has to do with the petitions.
Oh, the petitions, thank you.
The petitions are due that day, and for you to finalize the ballot, you need to determine whether which petitions are on or not. And so you have to, if someone is legally applied, can bring a petition in that day, you need to meet that night to consider it. So why meet Wednesday and then meet again Thursday? So we've just always moved it to Thursday and finished up the ballot that night. So that would be in two weeks. And then there's two in February.
I'd just say where I'm at, I think, just for consistency with the last appointment, is that the 25 signatures, letter of intent, and even if it weren't a special meeting, do it as close as possible to that Thursday meeting, if it isn't that Thursday. I think that Thursday meeting might be a little tight to get everybody in. Do you know what I mean?
No, what, you mean, get everybody in?
I think he's suggesting a special meeting to consider the applicants.
Yeah, maybe shortly after that second council meeting we have coming up.
Or the next week, 29th, 30th?
You're meeting next week, you're meeting the next two weeks. So next Wednesday, and then the following Thursday. So you're suggesting something between the 15th and 23rd, special appointment meeting?
No, I think I'm suggesting something between the 23rd and the following one.
Oh, after.
The 29th or the 30th, between?
Yeah.
Oh, so maybe
Because you want them in, you want them in that next meeting anyways, I think. You're right, or it's like preposterous, really, to kind of go to two meetings there.
But that's what would happen if you do the
The 29th?
If you do the 29th or 30th of January, they're going to miss the 15th and the 23rd. They would only be here for the two February meetings.
Yep, but if you don't The 23rd is too soon, and you wait for the February one, they only have one meeting. So we're trying to give them two.
Like, they have two meetings.
I mean, you can appoint someone at the beginning of the meeting and have them take the seat for the rest of the meeting, too.
That's true.
That's what happened with Councilmember Watson, is that right? No, no.
No, no. It was the only for the next meeting, yeah. Jack, go ahead.
Are you saying that the 20, when you say the 23rd is a little tight, do you mean that it's too close to today? Or do you mean that the agenda is likely to be too full for that?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think we need to give them a couple of weeks to get everything in. If we're going with the signatures and the letter of intent, I think that's fair enough anyways.
Well, and that's why I have a slightly different view, which is that if an applicant wants to apply to be appointed up until March, and they also want to run on the March ballot, then they would, they will have to get 25 signatures for the, for them, to get on the March ballot, and another 25 signatures to get appointed. So what I would suggest is that we simply ask for a letter of intent, possibly coupled with the normal form we use for other appointments, and then, and not, and dispense with the 25 signatures, figuring that if the person wants to run in March, then they'll get the 25 signatures for that.
But the due date for the signature is, they'll need it to do it just once. If they do it for us, for their appointment, those signatures could also, they could gather them for the actual ballot. But they have to be in.
The 25th, right?
25th, 26 something?
I thought it was the 26th.
27th.
I think it's the 27th.
27th, they have to be in anyway, so they should just collect signatures for us and the ballot and get it done.
I'm good with that.
Unless there's someone who wants to apply who is not interested, do you then require that person, well, let me rephrase, or be more clear. If there's somebody who's interested in this very short appointment, who does not want to run in March, do we require them to get 25 signatures?
Okay. That makes sense, that makes sense.
Or, or no?
I would not. I would just say, letter plus a form for the, for the, for the short term, and then signatures for the, for being on the ballot.
Glenn.
I agree with Jack more or less, that I think that since this person is likely to run and will have to collect signatures, in any case, by the 27th for the ballot, we needn't tack that on. I would say, I think there's an argument for appointing as quickly as possible. And in a way, I would like to push for appointing by next week, if possible. If it's just a letter of intent and the form, that, that seems doable. I know there are already people who are interested, so it's not like we wouldn't get anyone. And I think that it is worth having someone in as soon as possible, so that they can meaningfully participate in the budget considerations, potentially, and everything else.
So deadline of Monday, say? You know, it's pretty short.
Yeah, I realize.
Next Wednesday?
Before the
What about a week from today? If it's next Wednesday, and our meeting is Thursday.
No, our next meeting is Wednesday, the 15th.
See, Glenn's suggesting making the appointment on the 15th, so that the person would then be on the council for our final budget meeting on the 23rd.
I got the 15th with a public hearing, budget hearing, so we can add things to that agenda? Cool?
So I would say, that feels fast to me, but I'm just one person here, yes?
I'm just going to say, I think the process is under as much scrutiny with the public in Montpelier as the actual appointment. And I would worry if we did it within the next week. That might add some credence, the idea that we had somebody in mind already, which I don't think we do, so.
We don't. Glenn looks guilty.
No, excuse me. I want to, I get that, and I think that the, in my mind, the election coming up in March is a very reasonable counterargument to that, that regardless, the voters are going to get to decide who gets this seat within two months. I realize that two months of incumbency could be seen as some amount of weight, but I, I don't know. I think, I think, I do want to balance that with trying to get someone in so that they can, so that they can participate. And we have a full council with full representation of all the districts.
I think I'd prefer it be coming to us in our board packet that we get sent out on the Friday, the 18th, so that anybody who had applied comes in our packet on the 18th. And we consider it on our 23rd meeting at the beginning, and that person could participate.
I'm still thinking of, I mean, so this is making an assumption that, you know, we would appoint someone who would also be running. And we might, I don't know. But just in the interest of equal opportunity, if there were someone who was only interested in just a couple of meetings, if we decide, yep, you gotta, you gotta get us a letter of intent by Friday, so that it can be in our packet, or whatever, then for, for the next meeting, for the 15th, that, I mean, somebody might be out of town, somebody might, you know, like, there's
I meant Friday, Friday, the 18th, not the 15th. I wanted them to have the letter of intent by the 18th packet for the meeting on the 23rd.
Right, exactly, I'm agreeing with you.
Okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm saying, like, if, because if we were trying to do it for the 15th, it would just be, I, the turnaround time is just very fast. But that's just my opinion, yeah.
So the questions that I'm seeing are, what's the application process? What's the deadline for applying? And what meeting will we make the appointment at? It feels like we're pretty much there on the, on the process. I'm not hearing anyone say they don't like my idea.
Can you reiterate?
Letter plus application forms.
No 25 signatures.
25 signatures. And I liked Donna's idea of giving people to the 18th, just because we don't, we don't want to make it look like we're greasing it for a particular person. We make the appointment on the 23rd. You know, I don't think that gives a lot of incumbency advantage. I would feel, if it were me, I'd feel kind of sheepish, putting out flyers that say, "Re-elect Jack McCullough," when I've only been in the office for a week.
Lauren.
I think the process question makes sense to me of the letter, application. If somebody was running, they would get the signatures. If they're not running, was running, they would get the signatures. If they're not running, then they don't need to. I do wonder about the timing. I'm just thinking, so if people apply and we were going to appoint them at the beginning of the 23rd, and then they're going to be a meaningful participant in the budget discussion, are we then presuming that every person, knowing that we've all seen lots of presentations and details of the budget, are, is everyone who applied on the hopes that maybe they'll, they'll get appointed, expected to be up to speed? Like, are they going to really be able to come in and jump in and into the budget in a way that's really fair to them and to representing that seat? Maybe, I'm just throwing it out there. That's like a challenging position to put somebody into, to come in, in that situation. So even though I, I want District Three to be represented as soon as possible, it also seems a little unfair to somebody to ask out of them, like, be appointed that night and then become a budget expert in the city's budget and make really meaningful contributions. Just throwing it out there.
Well, to that end, I would encourage any candidate to come to our, our next meeting, at which we're, the 15th, at which we're, we're going to continue to talk about the budget so that they are up to date, particularly about that topic. But otherwise, I think you're right, there's no, there's otherwise no way to necessarily prepare someone. Meetings, you know, either with council or bill or whoever, like, that can be, that can be helpful, but, yeah.
I mean, watching the, the recordings is always good fun for anyone, so.
Yep.
And that person could consider on that kind of issue to abstain from voting because they don't know, and that's totally legitimate. But it gets them a little bit of breathing space in two February meetings. It's a little bit absurd, I know.
Okay, so it does sound like we have, are sort of settling on a couple of things. So one being the criteria, not criteria, well, the, the, the application process being a letter of interest, going through the regular application, filling out the application form that we have online. And then, in terms of timeline, we would be appointing someone for the, perhaps at the beginning of the 23rd. We can either, we can discuss whether we want to do that at the beginning or the end, but sometime during the 23rd meeting, is that, is that, that's adequate? Okay. I think in the end, we'll probably have a motion about all this, but yes.
Well, so I'm looking at bill for staffing. So normally, is not Thursday the deadline? Or is it Wednesday for things to go into our agenda packet? I'm looking at staff time to put.
Well, normally, they'd be the, the Thursday or Friday before the meeting.
Okay, so if we are.
If the 18th would be fine. We could.
We could make it the 17th, so it's in our packet for the 18th?
We could make it work on the 18th, too. It's just going to be a list of the.
Okay, as long as it's fair to staff, that's all.
It's just going to be a list of the candidates in there.
Is Cameron going to do?
No, it'll be Jasmine.
Jasmine, okay.
While, sorry, while we're still talking about this, any comments from the public on either of these points, either the process, what's required, or the timeline?
Laura Rose, just a comment on your proposed amendment. I don't think it's all right to not put somebody in. And what I would prefer is that we amended to have a special election, so that the public can consider who they put in. And I think that eliminating appointment, if we don't move to electing, is not in the public's interest.
Thank you. Well, and that's something that we'll probably talk further about when we take up that language, so thank you. Do you have a comment about this, Morgan?
Yeah. So, just so unclear, what's the, what's on the table right now? Because I missed part of this. I saw something there at home.
That's okay. So where we're at right now is for, for this appointment, asking any candidate to have a letter of interest and.
So you're going towards appointment, right?
Yes.
I just want to say, I'm a Morgan Brown District Three resident, and I'm glad I was able to get here in time to comment. I just want to say that I very much support the appointment process. That's what my read of the language in the charter is. And we, we really, District Three, in my opinion, needs full representation. Glenn does a real good job, and I thank you for your service. And I also want to thank Ashley for her wonderful service over the years. But we need, we need full representation. I know it's all messy and stuff and whatever, but for what little time it might seem to be, it's important. And then we'll have the election for both seats up at town meeting, city meeting, and that's how, that's how we do it. And that's what we need to do. So I support that process.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, yes, Jack?
I have a motion.
Great.
That we appoint the council member to fill the time between now and town meeting day by the following process. We require all applicants to send a letter of interest and the city's board application form to the city offices by Friday, January 18th. We would take up that, the applications and make our appointment at the meeting scheduled for, for the 23rd. We would invite the applicants to, to address the council and most likely go into executive session to, to consider and make the appointment.
I have one change to make before, before there's a second. I think the Friday in January is the 17th, not the 18th.
Okay.
Right, it was my mistake.
Second.
Okay, great. Yes.
This is not, probably, well, why don't you vote on the motion?
Any, any further discussion on this so far? Okay. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Okay, great, yes.
My only suggestion was going to be, depending on how many people we get applying, you might want to, we might want to think about starting that meeting at 6:00. If we're going to do this at the beginning of the meeting. If it's only one or two people, probably not the biggest. If we're assuming everyone's going to have speeches, sometimes people have supporters that speak for them. We, you know, it's last night to do the budget, so just, unless we want to be here till midnight.
When do we have to make that decision? Next?
I could wait and see, you know, I mean, we could talk about it next week, but we won't know till the 7th, we won't know till the 17th, how many applicants we actually have, but maybe we could set a number if it's above a certain amount or something like that.
Jack, uh, Glenn.
They both have ears.
This isn't quite directly related, but while we're talking about the vacancies and the upcoming election and so on, I want to clarify a question in my own mind about the one-year term and the two-year term. For candidates running for the open seats in District Three, are, are they required to choose before they get on the ballot whether they are running for the one-year term or the two-year term? Is that how it works? You can run for one or the other?
That's yes, but the authority is the clerk.
Okay.
Yes, they have to pick one or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
First question?
Connor and then Jack, yeah.
Could a candidate run for both?
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to give me two petitions.
Right.
But sure. That would create another problem if they won both.
They'd like to stretch out.
Be another appointment.
Yeah, right. Jack, did you have something?
Same question.
Okay, okay. All right, so there is one other aspect of this, too, that I think is probably worth discussing. I just want to say publicly, like, what I am interested in, in terms of the appointment. So much of what I think makes a good city councillor is someone who, who is willing to do the work, who is going to read the material and be prepared, someone who's going to be willing to make the, the time commitment, not, not just to being here, but there are other committees that, that we do attend. I suppose if there's like, you know, basically, if you're on for the month of February, then that's a little more limited, but, but that's really important. And having some interest in the topics we're discussing, obviously very important. And bringing expertise, I think that helps. And, and then I will say, I just want to say it loud, that I am interested in a person who is not running, well, let me rephrase. I, I would have some preference for someone who was not running in March, just so as to not tip the scales. However, that's not the only factor. That's something, that's one of a, a part of multiple factors that obviously we'd have to, I, for my own part, I would have to consider. But that's just, but, but I do, I do have a preference for, for a, you know, short-term, till, just until March candidate. But that's, again, that's just me. Any other thoughts that you all have on what you, you know, look for, in, would, would look for in someone that you were appointing or anything in that regard? If not, that's fine.
Oddly enough, I haven't really thought about that specific question. I think because in a way, what I would look for is someone who fulfills the, the basic requirements of living in the district. And, and then, and then after that, I feel like it's sort of case by case. And, and also, it feels like it's really dependent for me on, on the circumstances, who's on council now, what, what balance do we need? It's all sort of, in, in my own mind, my own decision-making process, this is all pretty vague and wishy-washy. So if they, if they're a member of the district, resident of the district, that's about it.
I did forget one attribute, and that is someone who disagrees well. Being able to disagree well with people, I think is really helpful, anyway.
Well, just to balance your bias.
Sure.
I'm not opposed to somebody who wants to be, fill in the portion, the short portion, also wants to run, because it's a lot of study and it's a lot of time. And if they have that drive, that's not a detriment to me at all. So we'll balance one another off.
That's, that's great, that's fine. Jack?
I agree with what Donna said. One thing that really kind of follows up on Ann's comment about disagreeing well, is that sitting on the council, I think it's, it's important to come here and be able to listen to your fellow council members and be persuaded. People come and they have strong opinions, that's perfectly fine, but you come here, everyone has valid comments to make, and I expect people to have open mind for the debates.
Okay, I don't, yeah, Connor.
I had to say, during the last appointment process, when your seat was vacant, Mayor, I sort of looked for somebody who fit the character that you brought to that position. And I, I think it was only a year ago that District Three voted for Ashley Helen. She brought a very unique perspective as far as looking for working families. And as we looked at this budget, you know, I think somebody who, you know, brings those same sensibilities to the table would be somebody who I'd be looking for in the process, so just run that up.
Great. Any further comments on this? Okay. Obviously, we don't need to vote on this aspect of it, but I thought it would be beneficial to just have that out in the public. Okay, so I think we, unless there's further comments from this, from the public on this aspect, no? Okay, uh, no? Okay.
Well, hi. Thank you. I just want to thank all of you for, for the difficult task that it takes to, to run the city and the council. Thank you, Glenn, for your two years. And I am running for his position. The ballot is already in the town clerk's office with 40 signatures. And here's my letter of interest. And I will submit the application tomorrow. It's online, you said?
Gene, tell us who you are.
Gene Leon, 265 Berlin Street. Thanks again.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, all right, so, thank you all. So we're going to move on in the agenda. Thanks for taking some time there, team, to figure that out. I think that was an important discussion. So we are now up to the interim River Hazard map amendment. This is a public hearing, and so I'm going to officially open the public hearing. Small victories. And welcome, Mike.
Good evening. Mike Miller, Planning Director. So this is the, I guess technically, the, the second public hearing, but the third discussion that we've had on this. The last meeting, which was the first hearing, was postponed due to some snow. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to stay for that one. But I don't know if you want me to go back over it real quick. There were just two proposed changes. One is a change to, to the map, which looked, appeared to be a map, mapping error, which included some areas in the river hazard area, or in the river corridor that should not have been included in the river corridor. And then there's a second set of text changes to the river corridor, again, dealing with accessory structures. And there's a strikeout version that you have in the memo that I sent. From the meeting two times ago, when we talked, we had talked a little bit about reviewing the applications, how this came up because we were reviewing applications. And I, I wanted to clarify that statement a little bit. We talked about, or I had talked about, in this case, these were projects that would be denied under these rules, that we thought met the spirit of what we would like to have. But I also wanted to point out, when we get these applications in our office, we also look at the other side, projects that get approved, that sometimes we think, you know, is this something that's in the best interest of the city, and is this something the planning commission and city council should review? So I didn't want the public to come away with the sense that we're just here to find ways to go and let projects happen. We're, we're continually, continually looking at the rules from both sides. When a project gets approved and we kind of scratch our heads and say, is this really what we had envisioned, having a certain project happen? We, we do look at both sides. And in this case, the projects were proposed in the river corridor, we felt would not have a significant negative impact on the river corridor and would not create a public safety hazard, and therefore, we felt, with some changes to the rules, we could strengthen that, those protections, as well as provide a structure for which a project like this could be approved. So I just wanted to follow. That was one of the two things. The second piece that was asked to take a look at was regarding the language that already existed for storage of materials. I believe the mayor had a, had a comment that, isn't there already language about storing materials? And there is. It's 803E in the river hazard rules, and what that talks about is a requirement, and this is the, the federal language on that, which says, landfilling, parking recreational vehicles, junkyards, and storage areas, or facilities for floatable materials, chemicals, explosives, flammable liquids, or other hazardous or toxic materials are strictly prohibited within the floodway. So certainly, when we were talking about this, wanting to restrict the storage of hazardous materials within the river corridor, we certainly could replicate that type of language, which is already in, already takes place and is required in a portion. We could extend that to also include the river corridor. So those were the, the two pieces that I just wanted to go and mention.
Sorry, can you just say the last, but again, that it's not included in this, but we could include that language?
Yeah, you had.
Like, it's just a reference.
Yeah, we had talked about allowing the construction of a structure in the river corridor, and the concern was, what if they, we had talked about the storage, the structure is of low value and used for storage of low-value contents. And the concern on council was that it doesn't address low, could be low value. And the concern on council was that it doesn't address, could be low-value hazardous materials, and maybe we should also have that reflected in there. And I thought that it already was in the flood hazard rule somewhere, and it was. I just, and I found it, to be able to point out that there are rules that we could simply reference, or to replicate and repeat in that provision as well, if you'd like that amended to reflect that.
Lauren?
Thank you for looking into that, to nobody's surprise. Would really encourage us to do that. It's great that there's language. We can just mirror and make sure that we're not approving things that become a risk to public health later on. However, we can reference it or add that language, and just, you know, make it consistent with what we're doing in other parts of the floodway. Seems great to me.
This is a second public hearing, right? It is, right? So, so we could be theoretically, like, voting on this tonight, right? And so, is it, just thinking back to the previous conversation that we just had about, like, oh, we need specific language, to that end, is, yes, go ahead.
Are we positive? Because we had postponed the last public hearing. I mean, it just says "public hearing" on our agenda, it doesn't say "public, second public hearing."
So we'd had the first one.
I thought that was not yet a public hearing, but it might be.
Oh, maybe.
We're only, because these are interim rules, we were only actually required to have one public hearing.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And because I missed it, we have a second.
Okay. So it's possible that we could say, yes, come up with that language. We would like it to reference the, you know, that you can't store hazardous materials in the flood corridor, and then potentially be voting on that at a next meeting? Is that, or a next public hearing?
Yeah, whichever you guys want. If you can vote to adopt as amended, or we could go through and schedule it for next week as well.
So either way?
Yeah.
Okay. Donna, did you have to?
Well, I was just wondering if you could give us the reference, so if we wanted to make a motion to adopt the amended amendments as proposed, plus that. Because everything else has been included in our agenda, and people have seen, but we would need the language for the section for hazardous.
So the eight oh three E?
Eight oh three point E is the hazardous materials. And I think the intent was that it would be included under number, under number three, which the proposed is seven eleven point D, and I think it would be number three, letter C.
Whoa, can you just say that like that?
Really?
A lot of the numbers there. Say that again.
Seven eleven point D. And we've, we have numbers one, two, three, and four.
Yep.
And this, I believe, was to be added to number three, lowercase letter c.
Could you say something as simple on the number three C after low-value content, and no hazardous material per eight oh three point three hazardous material section? I mean, could you do it that briefly?
We could potentially have found the language. I would just maybe want to add a few more words, just because I don't think people would maybe think that, you know, a shelf full of pesticides is a hazardous material, but it is. So, like, so the language is in there, which maybe is just a little more descriptive for people. Chemicals, explosives, flammable liquids, or other hazardous or toxic materials.
Which is the language from?
Which is the language mirrored that Mike referenced.
You would include the language, not the reference.
Got it. So it's just a little, a few more of the words from that.
Go forward.
At least that, landfilling and parking recreational vehicles, which probably don't either, but that's not gonna.
You're proposing to add in words, starting with, starting with the word chemicals? So low va-
Yeah, the thing where that is floatable materials.
Low values, and does not involve chemicals, explosives, flammable liquids, or other hazardous or toxic materials, period.
Well, semicolon, and.
Semicolon, and, yeah.
Semicolon's very important. Okay. Lauren, did you have a comment on this point?
I did.
Yeah.
Laura Rose. I've just been watching the changes to the zoning over time, and I've spoken to you about it before. And at that time, Jack assured me that there would be a full public hearing, you know, not these interim things, that we can go through a full process. This is about, you know, I can pull up the meeting and look at it, and you assured me that no changes would be retrospective to projects that are already applied for. And I'm just finding that I don't believe you, and that you're behaving not how you told me you would.
I can tell you, I don't believe we've applied any future zoning to prior projects, because we're not allowed to.
Current projects are getting the zoning changed without public input, so that the projects can go through. And I would just like to state that in a time of environmental change, the protection of the waterways and slopes of our city are of paramount concern if we are going to survive droughts and floods, as they become more and more frequent. And building in the river corridor to allow projects that you want without a full public hearing, which I was assured we would get, you know, you just keep changing the zoning and citing projects without informing the public about which projects these are. I don't know if you're informing council of what the projects are, and it's inappropriate to just change the zoning without full hearing.
Okay, thank you. And I guess I would say that, so we are following our prescribed process, and then this is a public hearing. This is, that's why we're doing this, because we want your input.
But I was assured that we would have the full process of multiple hearings, and, you know, that anything that was adopted would never apply to projects that were being applied for currently. It would just be future applications. And is that true? That's what you told me.
So you have a couple of things there. One is about applying to future projects versus past projects, and the other is about public hearings. So one possibility is that we could potentially have, so the process for changing anything like this is you need at least two, well, unless it's interim, you need two public hearings. We could, we could still do that. We could have another public hearing on this topic, though this is actually at least the second time that we've discussed this, but fully, you know, properly warned. You know, we're not, we're certainly not hiding anything. We're, we've warned these topics, just like every other topic. And then the other issue about future projects is that, well, I was just gonna say, sometimes we, you know, we write the zoning, and then find that the intent was not, or that the wording doesn't always work with the reality, like there are unintended consequences. And so it's really important that we're able to learn through, through this process, that we can get closer to what the intention was. Is there anything further that you were going to add?
I think, I think I understand her concern, and it's, it's, there's two different things. So if someone who's actually filed an application, they then come under the rules that were followed, that happened as they were filed, period, that's it, nothing can change. What I think you're referring to, if I'm, and I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but I'm just trying to understand your concern, is that people who have raised the possibility of projects and found that the language didn't work for them, we may have then said, hey, that wasn't what we intended, and you may be referring to Saban's pasture when the zoning line was moved, or in this case. But in those cases, and actually, that particular project was discussed pretty openly as part of that, that process. It was very clear to the public what that was about. But there, no application had actually been filed to become vested in a certain sense of, so that's the only thing I can think that.
I mean, but when I watch behind the scenes in the planning meetings, they're not talking about specific projects. They're just hearing Mike say that, well, we found this to be difficult, and we want to change it, but I don't hear any specific discussion of the project.
In a lot of-
So how did the people making the decisions about the regulations know what the issues are?
So in, I mean, we've gone through a number of these zoning fixes, and a number of them, there were not specific applications that we had. They were hypothetical. In these cases, we've been pretty open about the fact that there were two applications that are in, they weren't, aren't, have not been submitted because they will not be approved in the river corridor, and these were in the river corridor, not in the flood hazard. The one project, which we pointed out, is on Cummings Street. It is on the north side of Cummings Street, and it is basically how we discovered that the map had an error on it. The state model clips the river corridors at these roadways, because basically, the state is going to defend, or the, we're gonna, we're gonna assume that if a road gets washed out, if the river moves, that we will put the roads back in. If you look on all the river corridor maps, that's the way they're written. For whatever reason, this river corridor crosses Cummings Street, goes onto the other side, and affects an ability of somebody who wants to put an addition on the side of their house. And we feel that's not appropriate. That's not the intent of what that district was meant for, and therefore, the map should be corrected, and therefore, that project would be allowed to move forward. It can't move forward if the vote is to keep that area in. The second project is north of that, also in the river corridor. It is not in the flood hazard area. It is a project where somebody has had a business for a long time, and has needed to put some cover, a cover over their sand pile, to protect their sand during the winter, to keep the snow and the rain out of it. And so it's a relatively cheap structure. It's not in the flood plain. It is more than fifty feet from the river. And again, was a project that we simply pointed out and said, we don't have the ability to approve this project, but it seems like a reasonable project, because it is a low-value structure. It is intended to allow for the continued use, and we could think off the top of our head of other examples that people may want to try to do. If somebody had a, had a horse, and wanted to have a shelter for their horse to be able to get under, to get out of the weather. Again, it's a low-value structure. It's not storing contents that are dangerous. It's an ability for somebody to be able to make, make a structure. That could meet a certain rule. Again, it is certainly within your powers to go through and say, that's not the intent. We, we were pretty clear when we amended these rules. In the, in the underlying version of things we added, you'll note that we have identified we don't want to have residential structures in there, we don't want things of value. We want to have the applicant certify that they understand that these structures will be, that things will be developed in a hazardous area, and the applicant acknowledges inherent risk to property by developing in the river corridor. So in these cases, there are a number of properties that exist along Elm Street, where a lot of their backyards are all river corridor, and low-value structures are permitted by the state in their model, and we felt we, we need to have a little bit more clearer set of guidelines in there. So that was our intent. So there are two projects that are proposed, two projects that are awaiting application.
Okay. Thank you. Any further comments from council or the public? Before you go again, Laura, it's only one who hasn't spoken on this topic who would like to. Okay. Anything from council, since we have, yes, go ahead, Jack, and then Lauren?
I just want to observe that I personally, and probably other members of the council, but just speaking for myself, rely very much on the professionalism and integrity of, of the employees of the city, including the zoning and planning director, the zoning administrator, and other professionals who are involved in evaluating the, the needs of the city, and the, and the implications of changes that are being considered. And I think based on the representation from the Director of Planning and Community Development, and the, the study that all the members of the council have made of this proposed interim change, that it's, it's in the best interest of the city to, to adopt the proposed change.
Lauren?
I just wanted to echo from last time. I just, I remain concerned about with climate change, increasing flooding, I think encouraging any development in our river corridors is short-sighted. So, I mean, I'm gonna continue to generally oppose this. I do hope that the hazardous language, which I did email everyone, a proposal that just excerpts exactly what's from the floodway language that Mike had provided to us. So at least if we are developing, we're not creating an undue risk with, by storing hazardous materials. So if that didn't come through, let me know. But, but yeah, just philosophically, I just think, expanding development within our floodways, seeing what's happening in Australia right now. We know that natural disasters are gonna continue to get worse and worse in building in these areas. Just, I don't think we should be encouraging in our policies.
Anything further over here? Glenn, and then, then we'll go to Laura, yeah.
Thanks, Lauren. I'm, I'm not the expert that you are in that, and I think, in my mind, on that particular subject, I feel like, I, in my mind, it is, there is a balance between not building in vulnerable areas, and also continuing to work on development where it makes sense in terms of the density of our city, and where things already are. It's somewhat unfortunate in some ways, but, but we are centered right on many rivers, and it's, I think it's difficult to entirely pull back from those rivers. My feeling on, on the proposed change is that the, the structures we're talking about are minimal enough that I am willing to support it with, with that balance of concerns in mind.
Lauren?
I'm just wondering why zoning has to be changed with broad strokes when a variance could be issued for a particular project, which would still leave protections in place? Of course, I want to protect against hazardous materials immediately, but as far as building and slopes, waterways, why can't individual products receive variance? Because that is within, I believe, the control of the design review? Is that not true?
Variances are tricky. They are allowed under, under state law, but they're very, they're very, very limited in what they're allowed to do, and so it's very difficult to legally get variances. The other, the other thing that variances open a community up to is being arbitrary. It's, you're, you're far better off to come up with rules that say, these are the situations which we will approve, these are the situations we won't approve, rather than moving to it generically, doing variances, because over time, somebody's gonna go and say, but, person A got a variance, and I didn't get a variance, this, and I have this very similar project. It becomes arbitrary, and you can end up in court for making arbitrary decisions because of the way variances are.
Jack?
I wasn't on the council at the time the zoning ordinance was adopted, but I was pretty actively involved in the process, and I know that one of the goals of adopting this new ordinance was to reduce the need for variances, what, what you might call what, what you might call changing with broad strokes, which I don't think this proposal does. Someone else might, I would characterize as adopting standards that are generally applicable to any proposed development that meets certain criteria.
Okay, so what's your, what's your pleasure, council?
We got an email from, from Lauren setting forth the, the language. I understand if she would not wanna, wouldn't want to make the amendment because she's not supporting the overall amendment. But, so I will move that as an initial, I would move that we adopt the proposed interim regulation with the addition of the following language in subsection D three C. Insert the word is after $10,000 and then after the word contents, insert the words, comma, and is not used for storage of chemicals, comma, explosives, comma, flammable liquids, comma, or other hazardous or toxic materials.
Oh, second. Further discussion? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Oh, oh, right, yes, thank you.
Are you a nay or abstaining?
Nay.
There we go. Okay, thank you. And thank you for the thoughtful discussion.
Did that approve the amendment or did that approve?
The whole thing.
The whole thing, okay.
With the amended language.
Okay, thank you. And so just as a, as a final thing, these are interim, so they will be valid for only two years. So at some point, we will be back to go through a full adoption process, which obviously takes about four to six months. But this will also give us an opportunity to use these rules for a period of time and then be able to evaluate their.
Effectiveness.
Their things and then we'll be back to adopt them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we are up to talking about the amendment to the dog ordinance? Oh, yeah, question? No?
No, I had, I wanted to clear it with council member Babe. She wanted me to read the changed language out loud.
That would be great. I just, before we jump into that, I just want to check in with folks. It's 8:30. Do you need a break? We still good? We're good?
Either now or, or after this, before we talk about the budget.
Uh, that, that could be good. I'm still aiming to be out of here by 10. And I think giving ourselves at least an hour for the budget, I think, would be a wise thing. So I'm hoping that we can, you know, I'm hoping this is not controversial. So let's do, let's do this now. Yeah, go ahead, if you want to read the language.
Okay, so I did send this out as a memo a couple of weeks ago. So this would be an amendment to our.
Edit to the packet.
Dog and animal ordinance, or dog and animal control ordinance. It would be under definitions, section eight, nuisance. So what this is proposing to do is make this language align with our other noise section in our ordinances. So it would have the same language. So this would mean the, this proposed language would read, nuisance shall mean any dog or domestic pet that chronically disturbs the quiet, comfort and repose of others by frequent or continued barking, howling, yelping or screaming. And then we take out the section that says, barking, whining, calling or howling for a continued period of 20 minutes or more. So this takes that whole section out of time and just leaves in the language that's in our other ordinance about noise. So that keeps that consistent. And then that section goes on to say, this definition shall not apply to dogs in a kennel or a boarding facility which has received zoning permits under our city's zoning regulations or working farm dogs that are barking in order to herd or protect livestock or poultry or to protect crops. A nuisance dog is also one that causes damaged property.
Before we get into it, I'm gonna clarify something. This is not technically a public hearing, but we are gonna potentially vote to put a public hearing on the agenda. Okay. Yes, thank you, just clarifying that. And Donna, all that language.
Yes, and that was our intention, was to get the dog ordinance and the noise ordinance to say the same thing. And this simplifies it very, very well.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Is there, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to have a public hearing, to adopt a change in this ordinance as proposed.
For what? For the, for the 15th?
For the next meeting.
The next meeting.
We did have a first reading, right? No, we'll check, see what we have.
Yeah, I mean, the, the language in the packet says council should discuss options and opt to hold public hearings.
No, I'm just trying to think. I know we discussed this earlier. I'm trying to remember if that was the first public hearing and then we said.
We've never posted it as a public hearing.
Yeah, we've just discussed it.
Got it.
I was trying to get the council's commitment to make a public hearing to change it.
Okay, so for the 15th then? That'd be great.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, well, that was fast.
Thank you, Cameron.
Not controversial. Do we want to take a break or? Yeah, okay, great. Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll get into the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, just really mostly like today. Okay, so we're gonna come back from our break here. One possibility is that we end up deciding on a budget tonight. I would love to get there. We, we may not. But Bill, did you have anything you want to say about this?
So just a couple of things. Typically, what we try to do tonight is at least have the council adopt a preliminary budget so that when we have the public hearings next week and the week after, we're actually presenting to the public what the council is proposing as opposed to what the city manager proposed to the council. Doesn't mean you can't change it over the next two weeks, so. But, you know, at least it's a direction. We, it happened, this is the spreadsheet. Now, I will confess, this is a shared spreadsheet with Todd and he's locked some cells that I don't know how to unlock. So, for example, I am told that the ash borer now should be 14,000. Actually, I can add an extra 4,000 here, can I? That I can do. All right, that's it. So, so anyway, these are, yes, I want to clarify a couple of things. The LED lighting bond, I don't think we have to worry about that. We, we're still putting together information on that. So we may come back with something at a later date, either next year or fall. So you don't need to worry about that. Just, but I can't eliminate it off the P page yet. I will by next week. So that's really it. These are the items that are still in play, although, I mean, obviously, the whole budget is in play. These are some of the things we talked about before that are already included in the base budget. And, but these are, these are the items that we'd sort of talked about as, as not in the budget, but things that we wanted, wanted to discuss. So we've, we've got the homeless task, homelessness task force, which the total ask was 56,400. Ash borer, which is 14,000. The energy plan, we do have a place to fund that, so that does not need to be an add-on. We've now got that in the budget.
The energy plan?
Energy plan, yes. For now, unless you want to move money around. But that also came from the capital plan.
Okay.
The downtown Wi-Fi, again, we hadn't recommended it because of the price. The rec center bond, that's 300,000 is at its peak in another year. Would not actually be 300,000 the first year, just to be clear about that. But that's the highest hit. And again, could be a decision whether to add that to the budget or have us go back and, you know, come back and say what we would take out to fit that in. Again, that would have to come from the capital plan. And I, I don't have in front of me the debt scheduled for the first year. Probably by the end of this meeting, someone named Cameron or Kelly will have that number. But it's 114,000 or something like that.
Excuse me, Bill, since you're talking, can we interrupt him or not?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yeah.
So on the rec bond, I guess I see it as a capital.
Right.
And we talked about the CIP, having things going off. And so the more the staff could look at that and deal it, deal with it as a capital versus.
Oh, yeah, no, that's right. I think, so I, that's a policy question of yours is, is do you have, you know, do you add it on to the budget or do you have us put in? But then we would have to, if you want to put it into the capital plan, which is frankly what I think we would do, we've just got to look at what, what's in it now that comes out because we still have to fit it in. And so I would think that you would want to know the consequences of that.
Yep.
Just for the sake, well, so are you not able to edit?
No, that's what I'm not able to do.
So, but in the far right column, can you write final numbers?
I can make final numbers if I click X's here and I can add, or I could put minuses in there to change the final number. So for example, let's say here's one we know we want to do, although it's already in somewhere else in the budget. But just for now, so if I just hit an X there, now that adds that to the final column. So I can do that.
But we couldn't, for example, delete that one because we know it's already in?
Right, but as long as it's not Xed, it's not in the final total. So right now, none of, the, the final total column is here. Thank you. The final total column is here. This line right here. So right now, none of those are in. And so I would just say, you know, we leave that out knowing that it's funded elsewhere. And then when I can write a note on it, I will. So the first year's, hey, look at that, I cut it right, wow. The first year's debt would be 114 for, 114 to 36 for the rec center bond, not.
Not 300?
Not 300,000. But it would then go up to 302,000 the next year, next full year.
And that's if we decide to put it on the March ballot and it's, actually, to be fair, even if it's on the November ballot.
It's probably gonna be the same.
It would be the same because.
It depends when we float the bond. Yeah, it probably would be the same.
Because either way, it's still in fiscal year.
Twenty.
Twenty-one.
Right.
That's helpful for me to think about, just in terms of like, is it March or is it November? Either way, if, if it passes, we would have to account for that. Donna, do you have something?
Other than, I guess it's still looking at it within the CIP as a whole. It might not be the same dollar value to our tax property. Is that correct, Bill?
Well, so we're probably talking an inside baseball here for those that are following along. We have a set sum of money for capital budget, 2.2 million or 2.4 million, excuse me. From that, we take our debt payments and then everything that's left is what we fund annual capital projects. So the notion would be if we've added new debt, it would fall within that 2.4 million dollars. So the good news is we don't have to raise the taxes to pay for it. The bad news is that's 114 to 300,000 dollars in the next few years that we wouldn't have any annual dollars that goes for street sidewalks and other things. So it's still a policy choice. We're, we're either not spending it somewhere else or raising more. Or we could say, no, we're gonna raise the capital plan by 100,000 dollars and raise taxes to do that. Or cut somewhere else in the budget not related to the capital plan at all. But either way, it still costs us that much money. But right, if we put it in the capital plan, it wouldn't raise the bottom line of our budget, but it would mean we'd have to identify 114,000 dollars of items that are in there, 35,000 of which are the energy plan and 20,000 of which are Confluence Park. So those are in that, the types of things that would be in play.
As we've been trying to make progress in our capital plan to be fully funding, you know, streets and sidewalks and whatnot, presumably if we did that, that would take away from that upkeep or is that?
Well, it would, and I don't have that chart in front of me. Actually, I probably should have brought my book. But, but I, the good news is that some other debt would be falling off. So even though we might be adding 300,000, you know, we'd have to take a look at what those numbers are. I know the last couple of years, we've been at a real high in annual money. So I think I figured out that we'd only be back to like last year's level of, of street funding. So it wouldn't be a drastic drop, but I'd, I'd want to really walk through that more carefully. I'm sorry, I'm not ready to do that tonight. I would have been had I not been servicing, doing service to the state judicial system.
Any other, so before we go into proposals, any further clarifying questions people have about what is up here? Yeah, go ahead, Donna.
You said your 35 was already in and you just mentioned Confluence Park already has 20?
Well, so, yes. Well, we could, I believe we could find it. And I say that, I'm kind of out on a limb when I say that. I haven't talked that, but I did talk with Todd about it when this first came in and we thought we could probably, our bigger concern was the other 27 out of the parking fund. We believed we could locate the funding for this. But again, it would either be reducing some other project or whatever, fitting it within the sum of money. The, the energy plan, to be clear, is we had money in the capital plan already for energy improvements. And there were, it was split into two components and one of the components was 34,000 dollars. And 35,000 was the estimated cost of the energy plant. So we thought, well, that is a place we could go to get the energy plant. So it's, that would work.
Well, so tonight, if I want the 20 for the park, do I have to put it in or do I assume that it's there?
I assume for tonight that it's covered.
Okay, thank you.
If I, if I change, I'll let you know before next week's meeting.
One clarifying question I have about the last one there, CVPSA. I think I'm gonna probably ask this of Donna as our rep on CVPSA. Can you tell us about what that's for? And I may have some follow-up questions for you.
Right, it's a telecommunications study regionally. It's also in partnership, as the council wanted, with Central Vermont Fiber. And we're also hoping to bring in the hospital as one of another partner. And so the whole study is in two parts. It's like anywhere from 50 to 85,000 dollars. And we're asking for 25 from the city of Montpelier and 25 from the city of Berry. And the P, the Public Safety Authority is putting 35 of its 47,000 cash balance in for the project. And so the first phase would be doing a full assessment of all the 23 towns in Central Vermont. Go in and actually looking and talking to the towns and the far places and the emergency squads and seeing what has radios, what has towers, where fiber can work and where it needs to be strengthened and even cellular service in some places. And then it would come back with it. The second phase would be implementation business plan, like what would be the solution of the problems and the needs we currently have. So we'd be hoping to take phase one, to be able to find grants to match, to then implement the actual business plan to how we actually make those improvements happen and the partners and the shared revenue. Does that make sense to people?
That's helpful. Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, no, just a question. What if Berry doesn't vote for it?
Then we'll have to look to see what we can do as a smaller part. We want to get the first part done. Without the assessment done, then we can't go forward.
I don't know if this is something you've discussed yet, but I'm curious about who's the, the first money and who's the last money there? Because if you, if the range is from 50 to 85,000 dollars, I mean, if you get, you know, 25 from each community and it's only 50,000 dollars, then that's on our, that's on us and not on the CVPSA, potentially?
Okay, it's a good question. I'm sorry I didn't make it clear in my email. Is that actually the 35,000 that the PSA is putting up is for phase one, to do the assessment. But we really want to do hard the vendor with the anticipation of a contract for phase two. And so that the first part, we would be paying for and we would go ahead and do that. But we really want to be able to go right into phase two if indeed it passes on the ballot. And if we only get it from one town, then that, we have to decide if we want to try to implement enough to help Montpelier and the 20, the 17 towns that Montpelier has a contract with. Because Capital West, which now is a member of the Central Vermont Public Safety Authority, has a lot of needs out there. And so it would benefit Montpelier as a contractor with those towns.
And are those towns also gonna be asked to contribute funds?
That, for the next phase, we would hope so. But we'd have to go, again, the Capital West does everything by contract. And that's the whole problem with Capital West, is that they have no taxing power. So you have to go individually to each town and we may end up having to do that. But this first part that the. But this first part that the public safety authority is funding with its fund balance, we hope would be able to go to each town and say, see, this is an objective study of what is wrong, what the problems are, what the needs are, and this is how you get there. And without that, as much as we talk to them, they just shake their heads. So, we're hoping this is a substantial study that people will then look at and be able to quantify what the needs are. Is that, is your question?
Yep, it does. What is the CBPSA's authority to just put something on the ballot?
We're the same as a school district. So, like, I mean, I guess technically John can be here. My assumption is that if you didn't want us on your ballot, then we could print our own ballot. No, is that right, John?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So, by some point, you saying, yes, you can be in our ballot, then we don't, we don't have to spend the money to print it, but it would be done at the same time at town meeting.
So, but it's here because you're asking us to put it in, into the regular budget, or?
I didn't, actually, I wanted you all to?
I listed that because it was a new ask and so it was going to have a taxing impact. And so, I thought we should at least make sure we're thinking about that.
Yeah, I wanted you to be aware of it.
We have petition items.
So, is it safe to, to say that your, CBPSA is going to do that regardless?
Yes, yes.
Whether we approve that or not?
Yes, the lay of the land is, although we would like the council's support in both cities, we need to move forward and just see what the community consensus is.
Okay, so, so, I mean, one possibility is that we put an X there to just account for it. You know, if everything passes, including that, then we, you know, are at least aware of it. But, I mean, another way to approach it is that this is, this is separate.
Not us.
And then we just have to make that distinction. Happy to talk about it either way, really, but. I'm okay with leaving it off for now, I guess, unless you have other, unless other people have other thoughts. It's sort of a, it's almost semantics as to whether or not it, it's not semantics.
Well, it's very much like the items that you heard from the community fund tonight, that they know certain organizations are going out by petitions. You can or cannot assume that they're going to pass. It's up to you.
And then they're not necessarily part of, they're not in the city's budget proposal. On the other hand, we've always, whenever, like, for example, the color covered library is a separate budget item. I mean, a separate ballot item, even though we, you know, we account for it because we know, you know, we're assuming it's going to, we're going to have to raise the taxes for it.
Does this 3.6% account for the library?
Yes.
It does, okay.
Yeah, it accounts for everything you've seen. In fact, let's see if I can go back up above here. Yeah, there it is, right there. There's library, county tax, all those kinds of things, plus all the operating costs of the departments, which of course, we're happy to talk about as well. And then it, so it basically includes everything and not anything here, although, like I said, we've, the energy plan and Confluence Park, we think we can fit in. Although, like I said, if, if the choice is to go ahead with the rec center bond, that's going to have a 115,000 dollar impact, what, you know, something's either got to, something's got to give. We've either got to raise the money for it or take something out and then that, you know, then we'd have to see where those two items fell compared to everything else that was in the list.
So, it seems, oh, sorry, go ahead, John.
Yeah, that was what I was confused at about as I was looking at this with regard to the rec center bond and the lighting bond, which we're not talking about now, is that I usually think about a bond as a separate vote, which with the people voting, yes, we authorize a special assessment of X, whatever it is.
Yeah, although that isn't really what we've done, you know, when we've, we've done recent bonds, whether, well, so, the most recent bonds, of course, was the parking garage, which is setting up out of its own fund. And then the wastewater plant, which was out of the water, wastewater fund. But like, for example, we did Northfield Street. The water and sewer portions came from the water and sewer funds, but all the, all of the road and general fund portions are in this capital plan within that 2.4 million. So, we accommodated for that within that fund. So, we didn't actually raise the general fund taxes to pay for it. We just took other things out of the capital plan. And that's, that's how that plan is designed to work. But it's also designed to work, and I'm sorry, I don't have a visual for this. I promise you I'll have it for you next week, that as other debt payments are dropping off, you know, that, that, if you have the 2.4 million is set and other debt's dropping, then, then your annual is just increasing on its own. So, you can fill that gap with new debt payment and still stay within.
Well, didn't, I think we got an email from Cameron, I think it was earlier today, that showed basically our debt.
Well, then there's the debt policy.
Well, right, it's relative to the debt policy. But one would assume that the total debt, including the rec, would still, that would be reflected over time with the, with the decrease of other bonds. Anyway, what I'm saying is that there may be roughly a picture of that that exists in our email.
You have it in front of me as well, and I, I printed them out.
Oh.
Is that this thing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, a recreation homeless.
Yeah, it was on the back.
On the back of which one?
Yep.
The rec one?
Right, so, the gray bar was the policy limit. For debt, the blue is with garage and OE is organics to energy, I assume?
Yes.
Yep. And then the orange was, if we added the rec in with that as well. But this assumes that we would just bond for the entire amount? So, this, for the rec, that would assume that we would bond for, for the entire value of doing it, right? So, I'm trying to make that fit in my head with like, are we reducing projects?
Probably yes.
Probably yes.
Unless we, so, yes. If you have your budget books, so maybe you may, on page 17 is our debt page. So, it'll give you a little example of what we're talking about. So, here we are FY '21 and we're projecting, I can hardly see this here. So, you can see we've got in debt this year, 627,000 dollars. And then 1.25 million in annual money. And don't worry about the equipment line. I've actually shown that, trying to inflate that a little because our equipment has been flat for so long. But anyway, if you look at FY '22, you can see the debt drops by 100,000 dollars. So, that increases our projected. And then you can see how that continues to sort of, how that plays out going forward. And then I just, at some point, I just flattened out the debt because I figured other things would be coming in. So, in theory, you know, depending on the timing, if that were 114, you know, well, even if we had the 300,000, you know, 100,000 would be absorbed in that. But then this 1.4 would drop down to, you know, 1.1 or something like that, which, if you look at it, is really where we were last year. So, you know, it's not out of whack of where we are now. It's not sort of increasing funding in annual projects for a road and, you know, costs are going up. So, I don't want to make this sound like it's something it isn't. We're putting less money in. You know, we're prioritizing where we're putting our money. Or we can choose to continue raising the capital plan, which is a tax increase. Or we can cut in other places in the budget.
So, we, so we could just, we could do it that, this way for a year or two, see how it's going. And we could come to a point where we think our annual expenses are enough. We need to put more money into that.
Correct.
We don't have to make that decision this year.
No, but I think it's good to do it with eyes wide open. And I'll try to, I'll try to put together a more up-to-date slide of this for next week's meeting so we can really see it and maybe have, you know, some dynamics as we plug different numbers and we can actually see how it works.
Jack, go ahead.
One of the things that I know has been sort of in the background of the debt discussion for, ever since we, we decided on the parking garage and the water wastewater facility, is whether those sources of debt should be treated the same way as other sources of debt because they're not within the, they're not being paid off by the general funds of the city. And I know we have a policy on how much the debt should be by percentage, but the Water Resource Recovery Facility is paid by users, not by taxpayers.
Correct. So, our policy actually addresses that. It talks about overall debt with everything in and as a percentage of total revenues of the city. And then there's a separate part that talks strictly about general fund and the percentage of general fund debt. And I think those charts show those.
Gotcha. So, it does show us going above?
The general fund policy.
Yeah.
That's correct. At least for a couple of years.
So, do you have a recommendation as to how to treat this, in this document, how to treat the rec center line?
Absent, so, well, I don't have a recommendation because it's really a policy decision. I mean, it's really up to you whether you want to, you know, increase taxes to cover it or, you know, how you choose to look at it philosophically. Absent any specific direction from the council, in other words, if you take no action, if you say we want to do the rec center and we go forward and put it on the ballot, what I would do as a default is put it into the capital plan and then say to you, here's, here's 114,000, I think we need to cut out of the capital plan. That's, that would, because, because that's how we've set up the capital plan. So, that's the default system. So, I don't know if that's a recommendation or just saying that's, you know, I think, you know, I, if you, until you see, I don't think you can really decide how you want to handle it until you see whatever else you've got in there, what the total impact is. I mean, and, and, you know, maybe go back and revisit, you know. I don't really want to suggest we go back and cut other parts of the budget because we're already so tight, but that's always a choice that you could make.
I mean, that, this is probably the, I mean, besides also the LED bond, which we're not talking about.
Right, and that, again, that's another one that, what we're, what we're hoping is that, and that's what we're working on, is that the, the energy savings will basically pay for the annual payments. So, that wouldn't, that would be kind of a net.
Right, right.
Upcoming to zero.
I mean, it's certainly the largest decision on here.
Sure, it's a $5 million, right?
Yeah, and so, I mean, if we just, I'm assuming like, we're going to put an X by the CBPSA because if we, if we include the, the library in this number, then we have this precedent for other items that are going to be on the ballot. So, we should probably include the CBPSA on, in this, in this number, right? There's this, right, the precedent. And then, I mean, if the rec center bond was the only other thing that we add to this, add to the, to the budget, I mean, that's 300, if it's 300,000 dollars?
It'll be 115 this year.
115, okay, so?
That's why the minus 185.
Okay, so, 115, then that takes us to 4.6%, which?
Yes, it does.
That, to me, seems like a lot, but, but that's also a separate question. I, it's, I almost wonder if this is a decision that should be really decided in November with that bond vote? If, if we did it in November. But what's, I would love to talk about just this item for now because it does play so, you know, it's such a large factor. Other thoughts on this rec issue? Go ahead, Glenn.
Yeah. I think, honestly, in a way, I think that this, among other things, is making me reconsider my support for the rec center project as a whole. It's not that I think it's a bad project, but it is, I can't say it's one of my top priorities. And given the other items on the ballot, or, I'm sorry, on the budget. And seeing the hard cold numbers here in this form, it is, I guess, yeah. I don't know how much more I can say about it, but it is concerning.
Other thoughts? Go ahead, Donna.
Well, I mean, that's why my questions have been about the capital plan. I think the rec bond really needs to be within the CIP. And, and whether we do it now or November, I mean, I know I made the motion to have it advanced for March, but if that made a difference in getting it supported, then I would make another motion to move that to November if that's what it needs to be, but.
Lauren?
Yeah? So, I went to the rec center public hearing last night. There was definitely a really good crowd. There was a lot of enthusiasm in the room. Lot of love of pickleball. Lot of pickleball love. And, you know, it seemed from the really nice and quick turnaround summary Cameron did from the input, people took the time to write down after, you know, a good hour and a half of presentation and conversation. I mean, I left with two impressions from that meeting. One, there seemed to be a lot of support and enthusiasm for the project. I also felt like there was a lot more community discussion to be had. So, November, I'd gone in kind of being like, let's see if we can make March happen. And I left feeling like having that conversation with people led them to get more comfortable with it. But there were a lot of questions people came in with. So, I think giving the time to have that conversation with the community, to me, made sense. So, I mean, I, I would love to see us move forward with that. I'm still, you know, it, probably in November, I would push for, I'm still struggling a little with capital and how that actually changes the number.
So, if we, if we put, if we put it entirely in the ca, well, you know, again, it's a cat, it's a shell game to a little bit. Not that our budget is a shell game, but it's moving, moving money around. Yeah, sorry about that, Steve and Tom. The the, if, if you put the money in the capital plan, you don't have to raise the bottom line. So, essentially, it would be a zero impact. The problem is then we'd have to cut 115,000 out of the capital plan. So, that would mean, you know, maybe it, I mean, I'm just saying this. You know, we've got 55,000 in the Confluence Park and the energy plan. There's two things that could go. There's, you know, some, I don't have the list of streets in front of me, but there's whatever streets are in there, you know, other projects would have to then be removed to pay for that. So, it's still a cost. It's just not a dollar cost. But so, if we took that out, you know, we could keep the tax at, you know, 4.3% and fund it. I just funded everything else that sort of people have shown the most enthusiasm for, just to get, as a comparison. But make no mistake, that's, there's still 115,000 of something else we're not doing if we fund it that way. Or we add it, we say we're going to add that on top.
If we ended up doing it in November, I mean, it seems apparent to me that we're, we're going to need to do it at some point. That, that was pretty clear, I think, as well. And so, if we did it in November, does, I mean, that, that shifts things slightly.
Yeah, we could, so we could look at that. We, again, we could lay that out and see exactly how that looks.
That would be?
Because we'd have to think about when we actually issued the bond
Right.
for the construction. So, it might actually push that whole bond payment into the following fiscal year.
Right.
Depending on when the work was done and?
Well, and so, one of the conversations I had last night about the rec? Well, and so one of the conversations I had last night about the REC, you know, potential, was that even if we had it on the March ballot and then approved it, presumably that money wouldn't be available until July 1st still? Or is that not following the same rule?
Well, I mean, it's, once you pass a bond, you can start, you know...
Okay, you can do it anytime.
We get a bond anticipation note, or we, you know, can do a short-term borrowing to spend money. For example, you know, the parking garage is a good example. We've been spending money to develop the project with borrowing, assuming that we're going to be able to issue the bond. You know, that bond was a year ago, November, and we still haven't floated the bond because we're in limbo with it. So those, you know, those bond authorities last a few years. Sometimes you don't issue them immediately, so, you know, you could, you could pass it at March and still not, you know, what'd they say, half a year, you know, if we...
It's like 12 months.
Probably, well, we would, yeah, you don't usually float the bond until after the project is over, so, you know, we just would do short-term borrowing. So it is possible that even if we pass the bond this year, I'm saying this, and I am, with all the caveats that Todd and Kelly may tell me I'm crazy, but for reasons other than normal, it is possible that the bond payment wouldn't happen in this fiscal year, in which case, then we'd, you know, we build it into next year's budget, regardless of which time we do the ballot.
He's first, but Connor than Donna.
I would just say right off for me, I think I would have trouble putting the whole thing in the capital plan if a constituent were to ask, "Okay, where's that money coming from, 115K?" And I could just say, "I don't know at this point." That seems like that's a pretty big policy decision in itself, but would be shortening at this point.
Yeah, and I, in all fairness, with, regardless of where you come down on this tonight, even if you just say, "We'd prefer to do it in March or November," my thought is we would come back in next week and say, you know, "Here's the list." I mean, we're not talking about indefinitely. This is just a, unless you say, "No, we don't want to cut anything out, we want to raise the taxes," I think it's that kind of specificity. Again, you're not doing anything final for two more weeks, so this is the discussion of the options.
Well, I feel bad that new council members have not attended the Capital Improvement Plan Committee meetings. I mean, the education by the staff there, I think we should have a workshop with them because it's, it does make it very tangible. It's, to me, it did, and so I would invite us to make sure we do that in the coming months. But I'm really very supportive of the REC building being made totally usable. It's a very used, but could underutilized building, and the multi-generations and multi-activities that are there, and the ones that can be there, I think it's really important to move forward. November may make you feel better, but it's still money out of the budget, and the bonding takes a while. We have to set up where people are going to be while we're building this, renovating it, all these activities, whether it's the daycare, seniors, the basketball, the pickle, I mean, so I would rather have many more public hearings every other week if we have to, and move it forward, that's all. I think it's a real, real important statement of our quality of life and services, and to feel that we have a fitness room and an exercise room, I think we'll be amazed how much it'll be used. So I'm, I feel strong about it, but I do think it belongs in the capital plan, and if we need to add money to make it happen in the capital plan, but that's where it goes, for me.
So to point you to this, if you, again, if you have your budget books on page 53, 54, and 55...
Is that in the general fund?
Yes, it would be in these books.
Right after the tab, right after the CIP tab.
It's the CIP tab. You get a, you can see, so we're in FY '21, that's being proposed, so you can see kind of how that breaks down. You see the debt service at the top, the annual capital, the equipment, and this is showing the additional 25,000, and then it breaks, excuse me, breaks down roughly into the categories that we budget. Then if you go to the next page, you'll actually see the specific projects that are included in those dollars, and then there's a summary kind of, so 380,000 for streets, 25,000 for bridges, 55,000 for retaining walls, 121,000 for sidewalks, and 176,000 for storm water. That's where this money would come from. It would be, you know, out of this list of things.
Or we could raise the budget.
Or we could raise the budget, right.
And I would just say this list of things is what I hear more about from constituents than any other thing in the budget. Just be very wary on this.
So I think where I'm, where I'm at right now is, I agree that, I don't really, I don't want to see this list of things cut, but I do want the REC project to move forward, whether that it's in March or November. And so I am not totally clear as to how much we ought to be including here, if it's different from March versus November.
We'll need to figure out when we would actually be making the bond payment.
But then that does potentially kick us up to, at least...
Well, that's if we funded everything else. So I took out the bond payment for now and funded the ash borer, Foley, the homeless task force, you know, just as a starting point.
Yep.
And I left out the other things, the energy plan and the Confluence Park, assuming they're in the capital plan already. The survey, we can do that, we can figure that out. That's my annual. The bond that we're putting off, you know, we have, anyway, so just to get some sense of what that looked like, so you knew where you were at.
Right, well, and if we include the REC, so we're at 4.3 right now, we have yet to talk about those other things specifically, but...
Right.
Actually, could we, could we take out the ash borer and the homeless task force for, just for now?
Sure.
And so, I mean, anticipating that we're going to have a conversation about them, but then if we include the REC Center bond...
So without them, we're at, well, 3.8 now with CVPSA, and we were at 3.6.
Right, and then if we, if we add in the REC Center, knowing that that would be a separate...
That would be 4.6.
...bonded issue, that'll be 4.6. How do, how do people feel about, so you, if I'm hearing you correctly, Donna, you would be more in favor of not having it, basically raise taxes, having it come from the current capital plan?
Well, there's two points. One is really knowing when we're going to bond and incur the cost, and secondly, in what way within the capital plan are other things moving out?
Yeah.
And does it need 100, does it need the 300, 114, or is it 50,000 more? I mean, we may have to increase the capital plan, but again, even doing it now, when does that bond start having payment?
Yeah.
Right.
So I feel it's a little illusionary to put it right there at the beginning of the FY year.
Sure. So one possibility is that we could hold this as a placeholder for now, know that we need to revisit it?
Yeah, and we'll have that off for next week.
Okay.
Okay.
So maybe we can move on from this conversation, unless there's other thoughts.
Well, I just think that, you know, there's a nice turnout and everything for last night. I had a different meeting last night. I, I do think that the voters of the town are going to come out and support the renovation of the REC building. I think it's, is going to be a valuable thing, and we've seen, just in the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of news coverage on TV of the, of the new YMCA up in Burlington. It's a nice, beautiful place, a lot of light and nice new equipment and everything, and I think if people can imagine our REC Center being something like that, I think people are really going to, going to be enthusiastic about it. So I, I do think we should, I think we have to move forward with something. I think we should move forward with something that people are really going to want to like and use.
Fair. Any other comments about the REC at this point? Okay, other thoughts on other topics? Anyone want to advocate for something? Go ahead, Donna.
Well, I'm going to talk about the ash borer. I forwarded you all an email while Bill first started talking that Alex sent, and he's available for questions in the back of the room. I had felt that the council had made a commitment of $10,000 a year, starting to really build a fund when the, all the trees start getting infected and that we have to deal with it. And we luckily got a head start on it, thanks to the tree board and the parks staff, but I feel we can't ignore it. And Alex laid out where the 14 would go, and I think we have to address it. Trees are essential. We need to protect them. Alex, you want to say anything? Help me, help me! And did you see the email? Did you all get it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I see, I just got it.
And so like that first expense, I believe, is not going to be, once you have that portable saw, sand saw mill, you'll be using it for the continuous treatment of the ash borer, is that correct?
Yeah, so first, I figured this is not, so, first of all, sorry about, this is so late. I would write it off to sort of a weird twist of fate that happened back in the FY '20 Budget Congress, which is when we asked for $14,000 for FY '20 for the ash borer, and by total coincidence, there was $14,000 or thereabout currently in the ash borer reserve fund. And Todd and I just had a miscommunication, so I asked for 14,000, he saw 14,000, and he said, "Okay, perfect, we're all set." And really what I wanted was an additional 14,000. So this year's 10,000 on top of last year's 14,000. I didn't want to ask for the full 24,000. Some things have been cheaper, we've gotten some grants in the meantime, so I asked for this year's 14,000. And the intention is that, the background is that, the EAB problem is, it's a 10-year window, and the biggest impact is in year six through eight, and just based on what we're seeing around town, we feel like we're in year two through four. So we want to spend the money before the impact so that we're ready and set. I think we're doing, frankly, I think we're doing a great job, and I thank you for supporting that with the last couple of years. So this feels like the last year, set us up with the equipment that we need, we feel like we have the right staffing situation, and I probably won't ask again next year. I'm going to say categorically.
Well, you'll need, but you'll need the stuff, the inoculation that you do on the trees, right?
Yes.
But that's more reasonable, more reasonable amount here, I was trying to find out, what is that?
Yeah.
Two, 3,000, but as the trees get more, that will go up.
Yeah, so there...
Okay. Okay. Thoughts? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just going to make another plug for the lobbyist position, probably, oh, sorry, are we good with that?
Well, let's, can, before, yeah, anything regarding EAB and this request. Go ahead, Jack.
I think we should be doing it. I think that it, we, it's coming, we know it's coming, we, we need to be preparing to, we need to continue to, to work on addressing it.
Glenn.
I would agree with that. It also feels to me, from all of the presentations on this subject, that we've, we've heard over the last couple of years that this is money that we spend now so that we spend a lot less money in the future, because it, if we're not on top of it, it will end up being significantly more expensive to deal with the larger problem that we will have neglected, so I agree.
Any other thoughts on this? Okay, I'm, I will say for myself, I'm also interested in this, especially, you know, knowing the background of like, this was a, basically an effect of a miscommunication and, you know, knowing that we'll be able to use the mill every year afterwards. I mean, one question, I guess, I still have, well, so I'm just looking at the requests, replacement plantings, are those for trees that have been taken out?
Yeah, so, yeah, basically, the idea is those are for trees that are removed as a result of that.
I mean, presumably, also with like the insecticide treatment, I mean, there's some trees that we're just going to keep injecting every year, because they're...
Every year, yeah.
Yeah, continuously, right?
Yeah.
Or regularly. So, I mean, I assume that that should eventually be just built in to the, to the budget, right? Because that's going to be an ongoing expense? Is that more or less?
And that piece of it is not, I would say that's not a burdensome part of the budget going forward.
Okay.
You know, once you have the staff that's trained and you have the equipment to inject it, an ongoing pesticide, you know, that's just a little budget line.
Right. So is this, the staff training line, is that for the insecticide treatment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, no.
Okay.
That's a tree risk assessment training. The staff, we're set on the insecticide we treated last year, we'll be treating this year, so we're, we have the equipment. The staff training is about safety to these trees.
Okay, fair enough. I mean, yeah, Lauren.
And just confirming, this is equipment, like, that you need enough of the season? This isn't something you could like share with another town, or where, is it used that much that there's no opportunity for like a regional band saw?
Yeah, no, we absolutely can share it with another town, and part of what we've, part of what our approach has been to say, let's, let's be a model community for how the Emerald Ash Borer and show people what the right way to do it is. And so what we want is, you know, there are a lot of surrounding towns that are going to have wood, you know, ash that needs to be processed responsibly, so...
Alex, would it be possible for you to come, like, sit here?
Sure.
So that you're picked up by some microphone? Thank you so much.
Check one, two?
Nope. It's a big one. A big one.
Check one, two. There we go, all right. Let me start with just our own situation. So with Montpelier, a lot of towns have, I want to say it's a luxury, but they have the ability to remove an ash tree, and the most responsible thing to do is just to leave it there, because if it is infested, it's not going to spread. So if you are east Montpelier, that's their approach, they're just going to leave it there, it's on a rural roadside, it's no big deal. For us, that's not an option in most of the places that we're removing ash trees, so the purpose and the thinking behind the mill was, it's going to sort of, it's going to allow us to bring a mill to our tree and create an added value product out of all of this, you know, potentially valuable wood, instead of just chipping it or bringing it for firewood. And then the, the regional piece is about, well, can we be a model community where people can, you know, other surrounding towns, and we have sort of a EAB containment site in place, people can bring us wood, we can have our community firewood program, we can have, you know, a mill that can mill up this wood and also provide, do the things that the park regularly does, job training for youth and education programs. So that mill is sort of tied into our mission and the Emerald Ash Borer response. So to answer your question, we can definitely share it with other towns, it's not like we're going to be milling wood every day, we have no aspiration of running a mill, we have a lot of other things to do. But, you know, we haven't, we haven't beat the bushes in other towns to say, "Hey, can you chip in for the mill?" I mean, frankly, I think it's a good idea, and the way that we can capture that retroactively is to, you know, there's, there's a product there that comes out of the mill that, you know, I'm not saying it's going to be a profitable...
Pay for a rec center?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Can you rent it? Can you rent it?
Right. I'm, I'm not going to sit here and tell you we're going to be turning a profit on, on the mill in the Parks Department, but it could pay for itself over time, yeah.
It sounds like there's general support for, for that one, so I'm glad we have an X there for now, so I recognize we're not really voting on it quite yet, well, I hope we do get to a point where we're voting at the end, but thank you. Is it okay that we move on?
Yep.
Okay. Connor, do you want to talk about the lobbyist thing?
I know, I know I've made a pitch for it before. I just want to throw it out there, $6 billion budget, state budget up there, and what's scary to me is we don't know what we don't know. Some of these lobbying firms have five different staffers at any time sitting in the appropriations committee, transportation committee, there are a lot of opportunities that we don't know about that we can tap into. The other thing is, just being a Dillon's rule state, we are at the mercy of the legislature in so many different ways, so if we're really serious about some of these charter changes we want to have enacted, it makes sense to have some sort of presence in the State House all the time to make sure we're pulling the right levers and getting these things through there. We have things on the wall right now that may not get passed in... We have things on the wall right now that may not get passed unless we talk to the right people, get the right people into committees. But again, this, sometimes it's 15 minutes, you've got to go testify here. I hate contracting out, I hate contracting out on anything, but we don't have the resources in the clerk's office, in the city manager's office, to actually have that presence at the State House. So I think this is something that could potentially pay for itself. Look at the microtransit, we're dedicating $40,000 in microtransit money? That might not happen unless it gets through transportation this year in the State House. So again, I, we can play ball in all of this, but it doesn't matter much unless we actually put some skin in the game and put some resources into getting over the finish line. We all have full-time jobs, we can't be over there at the legislature, sitting at the committee, testifying all the time. So I think we need somebody at least who can give us the heads up when this happens, because they, they won't give us the heads up, the committee, the committee staff won't give us the heads up, I don't think the chairs of the committee will give us the heads up. I think we need somebody on the ground working for us, like Burlington does with Primmer Piper all the time. It's just my face on it?
Uh, Jack.
I may be disclosing communication that wasn't meant to be public, but, oh, well, it's, you know, when I, I talked to, to Mary Hooper about, about this idea, to say, what do you think? Is, is there $10,000 worth of money there to, to bring back to the city? And Mary's reaction was, well, she's really doing everything she can to get payment in lieu of taxes for the city and bringing in the money that there is to get. She observed that we have not really used our, our delegation to work on substantive lobbying the way, the way we could, and the way they would be willing to if, if we asked them to. You know, we have, just thinking of the voter, the non-citizen voter charter change, all, it's in this, as I recall, it's, it's stuck in the Senate, and all three of the, two out of the three members of the Washington County delegation live in Montpelier, all three of them are supportive of this issue, and I think we can rely on them to, we can call on them to work on this. So I, I, I like the idea, I don't really think it's, it's cost justified, although it's one of those things, it's like hiring a fundraiser. You never actually know. But, but I think it's hard to put the money in, for me.
I would say just an issue like the homelessness issue, like $57,000 we're being asked to pay for out of that, you know, is this a responsibility that really falls on the city of Montpelier, or is it a statewide issue? And as the Human Services is developing the list of what they want from the Appropriations Committee, do we need somebody actually putting us into the conversation, saying they're doing more than their share? And I don't know, like, Mary's in Appropriations 24/7 there, is she in these other committees? It's scattered. I, I agree that we should be sitting down with the delegation and coming up with a legislative agenda each year, letting them help us. But I, I'm not seeing it happen right now, so if this could be a catalyst, having a comprehensive legislative agenda for the city, I, I think that would have some value on itself.
One, one thing I would say, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Is that we got the funding for the, for the overflow shelter, for the warming shelter in, in Washington County, and I think because of our representatives in the, in the legislature. And I think what's going to happen in the future, it's, I think there are serious questions about what's going to happen in the future, but I think we're getting some state money. Should there, would there be more? I don't know.
I am very interested in this idea of, do we, as a group, have a platform that we would want to advocate for at the State House? You know, are there issues that are in our interest? I think that makes a lot of sense to, at, at least, at least do that. Which is something that we'd probably have to flag for another time, but...
If I, if I could weigh in on this too, a, a number of years ago, we did have a fairly significant staff presence there. We used to go up and maybe like on Tuesday mornings, meet with the delegation, and we would actually have the council, you know, usually, probably by now, we would have had the delegation in, and we would have laid out our top four or five issues for the year and communicated with those. And obviously, the League of Cities and Towns helps us on more general items, but not specific things. And then, you know, more recently, Mayor Hooper did, where she was also a legislator, so we had our mayor there every day, and then Mayor Holler was there every day. So the city had its mayor in the State House every day, and so they kind of handled that for us. You know, and then would call us if there was a, a need for some of, you know, it's so handy, we would just scoot down and get into whatever committee we needed to be. And I think it's been one of those things, that we're just sort of feeling that now, that we, we've got that separation that we didn't have, and we need to be thinking about how to, how to, so, you know, I think, maybe it's up to you guys, what do you want, whether you want to spend this money, or whether we want to think about the issues we really want to focus on and communicate that to our thing. And, you know, we have, we have some staff that could go up, we don't have unlimited staff, but if that's a priority, we can make it a priority, especially once we finish up with our budget stuff.
Lauren.
I, as someone who basically does spend my days at the State House, but on a narrow range of issues that are not often in the committees, where most of the issues that the city is working, so unfortunately, can step into that role effectively, I don't think. But I do, I mean, it's a totally different thing to ask your particular lawmakers to be an advocate for the city, which I think they all are, and do a great job. It's different to say than, that you're paying a lobbyist to is pushing for monitoring, taking notes on committee hearings, that might be a different committee than where our lawmakers happen to be. And, I mean, I know, you know, the energy ordinance didn't all go through, the, you know, there's been a number of issues on the policy side. I do think, you know, we've talked about the Vermont Health Exchange as one idea, can we get the city to be able to be part of that? That would be a lobbying effort, you know, let alone looking for, for funding. So I think there, there are both policy, and, and that is a funding opportunity to potentially look at, could we save the city? I mean, knowing the, the pressure that healthcare is putting on our budget this year, and, you know, forcing a lot of hard decisions here. So, I mean, I think, I think it very well could pay for itself, or it could be something we try and see, you know, how effective are we finding it, and what are we getting out of it? I think it would make total sense to say, what are the, you know, the, the possibilities, and maybe even sitting down with somebody between now and January 23rd, and, you know, like, are there, would they see that there are things in the budget and pots of money, people who do spend a lot of time in there, like, that this would make sense as a, as a contract? But I think we could do a little due diligence on that and look at a, an agenda and, and what opportunity really is there. But it, it's a very different role, I think, than what any of us are playing, or what our delegation plays.
Uh, Jack.
The, the other thing, obviously, this is, this would start next legislative session, but, but now is when we have to decide, decided, unfortunately.
Well, I would rather see us take a more active role with our legislators, they, I remember they used to come into council way before my time here, and I would come and, and attend those, and I also think we could try to look at some staff time to have some regular touch base, but I don't think $10,000 will buy you much lobbying time. I know with the Berlin Pond issue, the small group hired lobbyists several years ago, that was around seven, eight thousand, and it was, you really have to use the time so carefully. And it's, you know, it's even hard for them to be where you want, because they have more clients than just you. So I'd like to see us work on our own agendas first, before we lay out money for a lobbyist for such a small amount of time.
Morgan, did you have something you want to add?
So first off, I want to kind of second what Jack was saying, that we could do more with utilizing our current delegation. I think that's it, you know, we have a good asset there. Two, I agree with, with Donna was saying, that, you know, you might not really get as much as you'd like to for 10 grand from a professional. What I was thinking was, you know, I'm not looking to do this, I'm, I've been out of it for four or five years, don't want to get back into it. But years ago, I used to go up there as a citizen, and I used to monitor, I watched, I was quiet, just sat there, listened, and then when things came up, I was kind of ready, and it wasn't like a bull on a china shop, and I kind of, people knew me, you know, they've seen me around. You know, we've got people in this city, you know, seniors and others, and some of them have some experience at this kind of stuff. Why don't we reach out and ask somebody, hey, could you spend some time up there? Not every day necessarily, but, and if you get a crew, you know, who knows? But even if it's just one or two people, they might be willing to do that, just not testifying, just sitting, finding out, well, first, finding out what committee's doing what, you know, check the boards, you know, check the outside each, you know, door, see what the agenda is, and find out if there's been changes. And then with the ones that you want them to sit in, you know, they can sit in, listen, take notes, give a call when something comes up to City Hall. I mean, you've got people in the city that, I bet, I'd, I'd be real surprised if somebody wouldn't be willing to step up to do it. I, I did it on my own, and there were others too. You know, I was focused on homelessness, housing, and mental health, but, you know, I looked out for stuff, and I'd let people know. And you wouldn't need 10 grand. You know, have a program where if somebody's doing this, you get them set up for a meal card, you know, for meals, up at the stay house, instead of them doing it out of their own pocket, and that way, they have the energy and stuff to do it. And also, you know, the cafeteria is the best place to network, you know, with legislators and stuff, I'll tell you. And sometimes the best networking is you don't talk shop, don't talk business, just develop relationships. Anyway, I've gone beyond my time, but...
Yeah, I should have timed you.
Anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Great, thank you. That's a great idea. Good idea. Glenn.
I, I guess I just want to say that this whole conversation has been a good education already. I think it's a really interesting idea to hire a lobbyist. I'm not convinced that we need one right now, but part of that is because of ideas like Morgan's, or the possibility that some staff hours might be available for, for particular things, or that we could come up with a legislative agenda that we would more specifically pitch to our delegation than, than we have in the, in the recent past. So I guess that's where I am at the moment. I don't feel like I would necessarily need to fund this now, but it's a, it's a great general idea.
Connor.
I feel like I'm going to lose this one. I was going to say that, I feel like I'm losing this. Come on. I, I do think we should, at the very least, come up with a legislative agenda.
Yes.
Every year. I, I feel like we're behind the eight ball right now, and that if we went around the room here, would we know what committees, every one of our issues is in? I don't think we do, I certainly don't. And I, I could see some citizen involvement in this, I just hope we don't put together a committee who says something like, okay, we need a consultant, consultant for $10,000 to help us design a public policy subcommittee to actually get this done, you know? There, there is some value, and I'll continue pushing for it the next year, having five staffers across the State House and all these different committees, watching things, people who know what to watch for, who know what pots to dig into, to actually get this money. And I feel a little vulnerable that we don't have that now, and I feel like it's a little hollow. If we pass these charter changes and don't put the muscle in there to get these charter changes passed, so I'll say my piece.
Okay.
We don't even need to vote on it. Like, look around right now.
Do you have something to add? Just briefly.
I have the same sentiment as Connor. I mean, I, I think a policy agenda is a great idea, and, you know, getting our ducks in the road for whatever we can do this year, and getting ready for next year. I mean, maybe I've just been around too long and I'm very cynical, it's not monitoring, it's also pushing and knowing who to talk to, when, like, it's a whole skill set that's very, it takes a lot of work, and so if, if, you know, we get to the point where we really have developed that policy agenda that we feel like that kind of investment would be meaningful, I think it would pay off for us.
Thank you. I agree. In terms of this legislative session, do you think it's still worth, you know, trying to put something on the agenda for February?
Yeah, I mean, I was just writing down issues, you know, and again, I think we need to think about Montpelier's specific issues.
Yes.
Because we are covered on municipal issues, at least in theory. You know, I, I just wrote down what we've talked about tonight, microtransit, getting us into the exchange, our charter changes, of course, Human Services funding for things like this. And those are, you know, and I think you've targeted for things like that that are really ours, and we find the committees that those are in and the people they are, and if I know that those are our priorities, we can communicate those to our delegation, and then we can go up there and do it, if that's, I mean, I just made that up myself, you may want to, you know, saying that's the official one, but I also don't think we, you know, we need a 20-page or even 20-item agenda. I think it's, for us, it's easy if it's really targeted and key.
So maybe we can plan on putting that on an agenda in, in next week, February, whatever, soon? I think that's a great idea. So I think we're ready to move on from that topic. I know we're going to want to talk more about the Homelessness Task Force, but just really quickly, can we talk about the downtown Wi-Fi? Does anyone want to advocate for downtown Wi-Fi? I'm seeing no, okay. Does it make sense to talk about the community survey right now? Community survey?
That was the intent of putting 5,000 a year away, and then every three years doing it for 15,000.
Glenn.
Only to say, I think I spoke up in favor of this last year, because it feels like a small and useful thing to do for, for a group that depends on data. I don't feel terribly strongly about it, but it feels like it's, it's totally worth considering.
Other thoughts? I, I will also just express that I, you know, as someone who loves data, I am interested in that, and it doesn't, if we add it, it doesn't seem to budge the 4.7, which I recognize is not the only reason to do it, but...
Now you add at the, what do you mean, to add the rec center too?
So I, I'm going to go out on a limb here, I've been fooling around with dates, and subject to change, I really don't think we'll be issuing that rec center bond in FY21, regardless of whether we do this in March or November, just what, you know, it's a 12-month process. I started looking at, you know, time you get started going through this, even if, you know, if it passes in March, they're not going to start the next week in March. It's going to be April, May, we get going, it's going to be completed the following May, and then whenever that next, even if we were to issue the bond, which you usually do at the end of the project, the following May, the first payment would be due till the following fiscal year. So I, I stand to be corrected, but I, I believe that we would not have that for next year's budget.
So would you take it out? Because you put it in.
Yeah, I did, but I wanted to say it before I took it out and...
That would be helpful. Lauren.
Would there still potentially, if there's like design and whatever, like, would there still be costs?
So once the bond is, once the bond is approved, we're, we are authorized to spend that money, so we do what's typically do what's called a bond anticipation note, so it's a short-term borrowing, and that provides the funding just on an as-needed basis, and then, because that's how we pay for construction, and then once we know the final cost, as long as it's, sometimes it's less than the actual bonding authority, so then we bond for the actual amount, pay, pay back the short-term notes, and then we just start paying off the long-term, that's how we finance all our capital projects. So we would have short-term borrowing and maybe a little bit of interest cost or something, but we wouldn't have the big bond payment due until the end of the project, because that's when we'd actually borrow it. Again, I, I could be corrected, but that's, I believe that's correct.
Okay, great. Any other thoughts on the community survey? No? Just keep moving.
It's funny, I had a Transportation Infrastructure Committee last night and we talked about a variety of things about needs for, for data and needs for just planning for, to try to figure out what our needs were. And then I woke up this morning at five o'clock and I was thinking, well, what could we have in a survey and how could we get that information? And I recognize that's not the survey that you're talking about necessarily, but.
But it could have some of those questions.
Yeah, exactly. So I see the value of it. I'm not arguing strongly to put it in, but I see the value of trying to collect some information.
If we don't, we can always change it later if people have further thoughts or want to take it out or whatnot.
Anne, I can barely hear you.
Oh.
And it's one of those tricky things because it's not in front of you.
Got you.
It's got to.
Okay, thank you.
You're not used, you have the other one in front of you.
Yeah, that's fair. Is, for now, other thoughts? No?
About the survey?
About the survey. Are we, are we basically at three and three right now or are we?
I'm kind of.
What do you think, Connor?
I'm kind of agnostic on it.
Okay, well, why don't we, leave it in?
Yeah.
Fair enough. It's not actually increasing.
Take it out. When we have a more, when we have dealt with the big ones, the homelessness.
Yeah.
Then we can put it in and see what it does.
Yeah, let's, maybe let's take it out for now and we can come back to, to talk about it, if that's all right. All right, so the Homelessness Task Force. Okay, I realize that we are at ten o'clock right now. I'm okay going to ten thirty. I'm going to lose functionality rather quickly, but hopefully we can make it. Ten fifteen? Thoughts on the Homelessness Task Force? What would you like to do? Glenn.
I want to advocate as strongly as possible as I can for this funding. When we talk about priorities, I think that, for me, that often starts with the people most in need and I think that when we formed the Homelessness Task Force, which I was very happy that we did, the purpose of that group is to come up with the best ways that the city can help with these issues. I think the task force has done an enormous amount of work over the past several months. Unfortunately, I haven't been there for the last few meetings, so my detailed grasp of the last couple of things is lacking, but I'm really pleased that Cameron has given us some memos that I think are on all your desks about some of the different parts of this request. In order of my priority, and again, I think it's all extremely important, in order, in my priority order, I think most important would be funding the peer support workers. There's a lot of good, solid advocacy for why that is useful in addition to the clinical social worker that we have through the MPD proposal. And I just think it's really an important role to try to support. Second, I would say, would be the bathrooms. And I think that that's because I like universal programs. Bathrooms help everybody. More public bathrooms in Montpelier would be great, period. The fact that it is more of a need for some than others is just one more reason why, why that's a good idea to put it in. And then, of course, the lockers are a really small amount of money and potentially a huge impact on, again, people who have significant problems that they have to deal with. If they have a locker to keep their sleeping bag dry, that's a huge impact. So.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah, no, go ahead. You don't even need to interrupt me.
Well, so I just want to be really clear that as a part of this request for this budget, I'm assuming that we are not talking about lockers and we're not talking about bathrooms, because that request was for FY20, which is what we're in presently. And for the sake of expediency, I would actually like to take that up separately at a different time, because that's not a part of this budget discussion.
Okay.
Is that a fair statement?
Is that how they went from fifty-six to fifty-one? They took that out? I was wondering.
Cameron shaking her head yes.
So, I mean, I'll just project here.
Can you come up and use the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Because the bathrooms were for both years in their initial proposal to us.
Oh, that's, that's fair. The bathrooms were for both years.
So yes, all of our proposals are fiscal year, some of them are twenty and some of them have a twenty-one component.
Okay, never mind. Stand corrected then.
We do have two representatives of the task force here if I would, unless it's a process thing, I think if you have any like questions about the content, I'd like them to speak for the committee.
Just to clarify, did the lock, it makes sense to me that the bathrooms would have an ongoing FY21.
The lockers do not have an ongoing cost. They're just a twenty, fiscal year twenty. So the bathrooms and the lockers have a fiscal year twenty ask and then everything else is fiscal year twenty-one.
Okay, so we're not, so we're not talking about lockers necessarily in this budget?
No.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure it's clear about that. Thank you.
Right, so, yes, so, no, I guess I would just say, since we're talking about the twenty-one budget and I was corrected about the lockers, in order of priority, the peer social worker and the twenty-one portion of the bathrooms.
Okay. Other comments? Donna?
I would like to hear from the chief and your budget has a social worker starting this coming year? No, yes? Any, would you clarify that for me?
Where we're at so far is that it's a, it's going to be a clinical social worker that is going to be a split between Berry and Montpelier. Whatever the match is, but it's going to be the same amount for both Berry and Montpelier. Montpelier, we put in sixteen, but the range was sixteen to twenty per community. And then also, I was informed by Mary Moulton from Washington Medical Services just the other day that there is the commitment from the Department of Mental Health for, I want to say, forty thousand, I think forty thousand dollars. And then we're still hopefully going to have UVM Medical Center join us in that partnership for an undetermined amount. That's where we're at. And also, that's depending on how, I still have to have a follow-up conversation with Ken Russell also, just to kind of go over, he just put out what is the, what the social worker, as an example, the statistics and the one from the Burlington Church Street Marketplace and some of the efficacy of that program that was actually started by then Chief Mike Scherling from Burlington PD to get that program many years off the ground. So there is some support that also we think that this position can do to also help our, you know, reach out to our homeless population as well and in some cases, you know, direct them to some services. And we, and I certainly am clear on to the impediment that that may have for some of the population as well, because that person is going to be probably attached to us, the police, and some people might not be comfortable with that. So we also sunset that, but we think there's a lot of opportunity to do more than just pre-crisis calls and that kind of thing. But that's the funding mechanism, that is what's in place at this time. And so we're, and I just talked to Representative Peter Anthony from Berry yesterday morning at the State House and because again, there's a legislative component and Representative Hooper is also supportive and following this very closely as well, to make sure that we have sustained funding from the DMH side.
So Berry and Montpelier would have around sixteen thousand each? Sixteen-five, was it?
Sixteen to twenty thousand.
Sixteen, twenty thousand.
We put in sixteen thousand on the Montpelier side because I wasn't sure.
Okay. And then that goes added to the forty that comes from.
Correct.
Washington County Mental Health?
Yes, and this would, and this would actually be a position that would be purely a Washington County Mental Health position, supporting the two police departments. And some of the conversations we're having right now too is, for example, Anna Nunez is concerned about, you know, what are the statistics as far as how would this change? Because one of the things I do is not only support people and improve their situation and minimize crisis, but also are we making sure we're adequately diverting people away from the criminal justice system as well as, you know, diverting them from emergency department visits if they don't need to be there and help them where they're at. So Mary has submitted, you know, a lot of the Chittany County statistics to Anna as well as to the, so that's kind of where we're at. So there's a lot of pieces to it, but the commitment has been, is strong and we're very fortunate that we got the commitment from the Department of Mental Health.
And my other question is, if it doesn't pass in Berry, I mean, it's not a standalone item as within the police department's budget?
I'm not sure the mechanics of it, but there is definitely a commitment, is what I've been assured from both Chief Bobbetteir and certainly from Representative Peter Anthony.
I'm just checking to see if we were possibly going to be responsible for the whole thing. So, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Other comments on Homelessness Task Force? Okay. Connor?
Yeah, a question for the task force members. Who's actually employing the peer support workers?
Okay, wait, that's a detail that has not been decided. I think there are a number of things.
If you wouldn't mind just coming and speaking into the mic, thank you so much.
Again, dog, little task force, the street outreach. That is, that is flexible, actually, and it, I'm glad that I was going to make.
I'm sorry, we really want you recorded for the public, so could you talk into that?
There are a couple of things that I wanted to comment on. One is that both in terms of the function of street outreach and peer support, there are a lot of things that were not touched on either in the budget request or in the comparison letter between the embedded social worker and the street outreach. And if there's a point at which that sort of detail becomes a determining factor in whether that position is funded, we can go into more detail. Some things are flexible and they may vary with the geography. Burlington has slightly different needs than we do and different capabilities. So in terms of some of the details of who is being hired, I know last time you had brought up the question of whether it would be more cost-effective to, more advantageous to hire one person full-time and we feel very strongly that hiring two people allows flexibility and allows us to close some of the potential gaps that we are trying to address. The police, the police obviously don't take weekends off, but many other services do. And if you have two people, it's a lot more likely that you're going to be able to address that. So I think it would depend on the need, the specific needs of this area. We would want more input from the different agencies involved, but that would be flexible. We have to look a little bit more at how that would affect both the focus of the position and the limitations of the position, I think. So that could be, you know, that could be flexible. That's not, we're not extremely attached to one thing or another. We thought maybe a peer organization or, you know, one of the current providers would be the way to go or maybe not. I think just having someone out there doing it, because again, the strengths are the fact that it occurs after hours, it occurs geographically where people are and it is something that allows you to intervene at a different point. I mean, I think it complements the social worker, but I think part of the goal is to intervene before it becomes a matter for the police or the emergency room and street outreach can sometimes save money by doing that. Part of it is also maybe to take a little bit of the weight off of the emergency services and the more highly specialized people by, at times, helping to deal with people who have chronic low-level involvement with the emergency services. That might be something that a street outreach worker could reduce the overall cost in dealing with these people again and again. And also to deal with some people who don't normally come to the attention of these existing services. So it may depend on what people decide is the priority in dealing with the homeless population, in Montpelier particularly. I'm losing functionality really quickly too, so my apologies for that.
Yeah, I'm feeling there. Other thoughts?
Could you talk about the General responsiveness fund? Because I'm having a hard time just grasping what it, what it's for, whether there are other resources that could serve the function that this fund is designed to serve.
There are a couple of things we are looking at as possibilities. One is that apparently there are a number of unused vouchers in Vermont because of lack of case management support, because of lack of landlord support. Landlords don't want to, part of it is lack of housing, but even the existing housing, people wait sometimes years because there are no landlords that want to take a chance on someone without a rental history. And we were thinking that there might be matching funds for, if there were an initiative to help get people housed, that if there was someone who could match funds in terms of supporting the landlords, doing more case management to help people get through the process, that that would be one thing. I don't know specifically where the money would come from. Ken Ashley, Ken Russell, or perhaps Cameron would be better able to speak to that. I think, I think hospitals have done it in some areas. I'm not as familiar with that part of it. But that would be the type of project as well as the sort of gap-filling things, you know, like having a system that people can't utilize because of some sort of minor mechanical glitch, you know, that would be an example of a low-cost application. I know we, we very definitely want to look at other funding sources that might include hospitals, the state, private donors, grants from foundations, but at the moment, there has been so much work to do with the holiday season and the short, you know, the shorter term goals that we, we are fairly certain that things will come up. We do not know exactly yet, you know, there's a range of possibility. That probably doesn't answer your question very specifically, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Did you have something, Lauren?
Just kind of on, in the vein of the general use fund or a flexible fund, I mean, part of me is like, there's a lot of good ideas and a lot of good work that's been done. A lot of it still needs to be fleshed out, understandably, given the kind of short timeline that the committee's been working on. I mean, I'm almost like, does it make some sense to pick an amount to allocate? You know, I mean, I think city government helping, you know, some of the most vulnerable in our community is what we should be doing and then give some flexibility and we could keep in touch on what that money's being used for, but not be kind of line item by line item at this point to some degree, but say, let's, you know, set up to a certain amount or something that we can see that there would be good uses for and not have to be totally prescriptive at this point, that it's going to be this, this, and this.
There are changes. First, we can't tell what specifically they will be, but for instance, Economic Services is talking about restructuring the money that went into the 2-1-1 system and we don't know yet what that's going to look like. But one thing would be to be able to respond, you know, partway in the event that that is something that heavily affected people in Montpelier. And we don't know what their decision will be. We, a couple of us have met with them and talked to them about possibilities, but at the moment, they're just sort of looking for input and we don't have any idea what that will look like. But things do, in certain areas, things may change, either with the churches or with economic services or other services, and we'd like to be able to respond if an opportunity comes up.
So I have a bunch of thoughts on each of these items. I'm trying to see if now's the right time, I'm just going to jump in, I guess. I'm just going to go through each of the sections real quick. I'm not going to talk about lockers right now, but let's talk about that soon. I am very interested. It's something that I was hoping that there would be some specificity around and it sounds like we might have that, but I haven't got a chance to read through that section or that email yet, to get it today. But as far as bathrooms go, I, I am interested in setting up some porta-potties around town in addition to what we have currently. Though I want to recognize that this is, and this is kind of my impression of this, kind of the whole thing, is that this is all very new. This is all very much in the, we're kind of testing some waters here. So I would propose that we, that we have a six-month trial with the porta-potties, that we try them in the proposed locations and honestly, together with trashcans, because I think that, that would be important. And see how it works and then reevaluate. You know, did, was that successful? Was it useful for the purposes that we thought it would be? So that's, that's thing number one. So that wouldn't be three thousand dollars, that would be fifteen hundred. If we do a six-month pilot. As far as the shelter extension, I I want to be in favor of that, but I'm not right now. And the reason is for a couple of things. One is that the, I think it would make sense to do this if there were, you know, in-hand commitments, excuse me, from Good Samaritan and the church to say that they are, you know, that they're committed to doing this. I, I don't know where that stands. And so the second reason is just that it's, I think it's a little, well, I think it's unfortunate that Good Samaritan didn't ask for funding from our, our community fund. That, to me, would be the place to, to fund something like this. And in fact, I, I would have thought that we would have already been funding them. I think they probably would have gotten some slice of that pie, I assume, if they had asked. I don't know. But that, that feels like the right place. And if, if it wasn't the right amount, that we could have adjusted that based on on the, the timing and whatnot. So I'm not there for, for that part of it. As far as the street outreach position, again, this feels very new, including the aspect of the social worker, right? This is a, in itself, sort of a pilot that we're, it's not really private. I mean, we're, we're doing it, but, but it's new for us. And we're trying to see what, what is that, how's this going to work for us? And so, you know, do we jump in with two things that are sort of similar? Or, you know, do we, do we try one and see how it works, see what the gaps are? To be fair, I, I think I feel like I've heard enough to know that like, no, it is, it is separate and it's different in some ways. There is, it sounds like some overlap as well. But I also wonder about whether or not that's the kind of position that we could contract out, you know, instead of having it, knowing that we're not really a social services provider exactly. There are other great organizations in the community. Could we be contracting with them to provide this service? I, I have hesitations about this amount, you know, based on Counselor Connor Casey the other day, the other day. I'm talking about the value, or not the value, but the, the amount that somebody might be paid for that. If we were going to do this, I would advocate that they be paid something more than what it seems like they're getting now. And maybe that's a point that we can continue to talk about. But that's, just so you're aware, that's my hesitation about that, that position. There's a few aspects there. As far as the, the general responsiveness fund, I have, even since the last council meeting, gone back and forth about how I feel about this. Because on the one hand, I appreciate that it is, you know, maybe we don't need to specify what everything goes towards. But then at the same time, that ambiguity doesn't necessarily feel super responsible. So I have very mixed feelings about it. And I guess I would say, at this point, if I were to, to, to fund that, I would recommend that it be at five thousand dollars and not ten thousand dollars. So anyway, that's, those are all of my thoughts on all that funding. Anything further? Donna, please.
I think perhaps we're a little bit on the same page. I just find it such a huge amount that it becomes a much more social service than I think the city should be doing. But I like the idea to do something that also gets a match, that we go out and help people get grants, just like the social worker that the police did with Washington County Mental Health, that if we're going to do some peer support, and it sounds like they are really valuable. The information we've got both before and recently overstates that again and again. But I do feel we shouldn't pay for it all. The city has a responsibility, but I do feel it has to be balanced with also lobbying the state, ourselves, and our representatives to go after that. So between looking at grants, looking at partnerships, I think it has, a lot more to be done on the backside before I could put this much money into it. And I, I like the idea of some sort of a trial with the bathrooms. We've had so much problems with some of the public interface, with people when some, a service or helping the public and the homeless share porta-pots. I mean, I think there's a lot of communications and community work that we have to work together on. And how does the homeless help us keep things in order and clean and respectful for one another? So I think that really takes a lot of community, whether it's workshops, meetings, it's back to the social justice kind of community forums we need with experts to help us do this. That I just can't think it's us providing services that's going to make it work. Because this is trying to get people out of their, their place that they're in. And maybe not everybody can make that move, but I think the more that we can look at this as a way to help people reestablish a relationship and help us, all of us, to work together so that people aren't on the streets, is important. And I know you have to do some safety net catching, but I, I don't want to do too much from the city side. I want us to help generate more from the right sources that have the expertise to do this kind of work. I think the lockers are great. I think we need to think outside the box. I made an email to Bill and Ann, thinking about the pool house at our pool on Elm Street. It's empty. Why don't we try to do something there with showers that has specific time? Some way to use that resource when it's sitting empty in the winter. And maybe that's not the place, but really start thinking about what we have and how can we then use it in a different way to help meet this need? So I just think there's a lot more work to go before I'm ready to put fifty thousand dollars to this problem. So I, I do feel if we can get an agreement to do the extension for the shelter, that would be great. In FY19, the Good Samaritan got four thousand dollars from the community fund. And maybe we could, we could allocate four thousand dollars more to the community fund and direct it to Samaritan and get them back in that pool of money and thought. So that's some of my scattered thoughts.
Yeah, I was wondering if there were any way to do that? Because I'm sure they, I don't know why they didn't apply for it, but I don't think-
For two, for two years, they haven't.
I don't, that's odd.
So we could, that's possibly one of the things we could do.
Yeah. The one comment on the bathrooms, which isn't completely relevant, but just, just in terms of the six-month thing, I think it's a good idea. I will say that the usage patterns change with the seasons and the places where people go change with the seasons. So the one, particularly the one that's further out of town is a lot more likely to get a lot of use in the spring and summer and obviously not much use right now. But having said that, I suppose we wouldn't have to start now either.
Right, exactly.
Well, other than the proposed site is in the flood plain and I don't think we can put it there.
Oh. Obviously, people driving back and forth from north of here and Montpelier seem to be using that as a pit stop anyway, without even the-
It may be, I'm just saying, as far as putting a porta-pot there, I just, anyway, I think there may be some conflicts.
There may, there may be. But we were trying to look at sites that would alleviate existing problems in addition to the homeless issue and thus be more cost-effective.
Yeah.
The one other thing about both the, which may be obvious about both the salary that you're talking about is one, that we didn't want, you know, an increase in the funding to delay the possibility of getting someone paid to do street outreach. And two, that obviously, the street outreach, the qualities that are most successful in a street outreach worker are often not the same qualities that are going to be, you know, make for a successful office worker or a police officer or whatever. So I don't know how relevant, the money may be, may be relevant. It may not be, it may be unnecessary, but anyway. Okay, so that's.
Well, thank you. And it looks like Morgan has some thoughts, and then Lauren.
First off, I, Morgan Brown District, three resident. First off, I want to thank the council for what it has done thus far, including the overflow shelter funding. It's only for twenty quarts. There's still people out there. And part of what the asks for include helping those that are out there, not in the overflow shelter. I've been, I had been previously homeless since I was seventeen. The last go-around was twelve years. And I was spending it around Montpelier. And one of the reasons why I lived homeless so long is I didn't have somebody doing outreach to me. And if there had been, I think I wouldn't have been homeless so long. And I think if, this isn't just a national problem. It's not just a statewide or regional problem. It's a local matter. And it needs local solutions and local funding. It does. If we want to solve it, we have to, we really have to, finding creative solutions. I thank you for creating the Homeless Task Force. You've asked citizens to come together and pitch in and try to find solutions. And so these funding proposals are part of that. And street outreach is essential, especially for people like me who would go the other way, avoid people who might want to do more than I want, you know, and might want to run my bike. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but I won't go into all that. But unless you want me to. But there, everybody's situation is different. It's not all the same. I'm just speaking for me. But one thing, I'll tell you, one thing that finally ended homelessness is a houser that works here in Montpelier. Gave me a ride because I missed the bus and got me into Montpelier. And then I said, can I ask you a question? And I asked them about housing. Two months later, I got housed. And it had to do with that person and bending over backwards. Somebody I knew for years. And other people, family of others. And I got housed and that's what it takes, takes people building relationships and trust. And it works. I know, I've been housed for ten years and I'm grateful. And I just want to see the opportunity for other people. So the porta-potties, hey, six months is better than none. So yeah, all right. But the social workers, the, excuse me, the, I meant to say, street outreach workers. If I said social workers before, I meant street outreach. They're essential. And what initially had been asked but then got halved, it was twice the amount that was going to be asked for, you know? And that would be great if you want to fund that, super. But it got trimmed down. And, because for different reasons, including we really need this. It's essential. Some point, if you want to raise double the salary, hey, fine. Okay, let's see, the lockers, I had no place to put stuff. And sometimes I was carrying it around or you have to stash it somewhere. It's not always a great way to stash it. And twenty, twenty years ago, over twenty years ago, I used to be able to walk a lot. But because I was carrying all my stuff around, I seriously hurt my legs, ankles, feet. And that's why you see me walking around with a cane and a walking stick, because I haven't healed from that and I probably never will. And having someplace to put sleeping bag and backpack and things like that, if it's big enough, huh, you might save somebody a lot, including their body. And I didn't mention my back, but it's like, it would, it would have been very helpful. And that's all I'll say unless I'm asked questions. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Donna, and then Lauren?
I just want to really thank Morgan. You came down to, to support further earlier discussion and you stayed for this. So thank you so much for sharing so openly. Thank you. And he made me think of something else and it's that, it's, it is not just Montpelier's problem. And hence, I feel if we don't get other communities to buy in, people cluster here, but guess what? They come from other places. And I would hope that the region, particularly Berry, Montpelier, and Berlin would work together to fund some of these programs, just again, as they're doing with the social worker. And I'd like us to keep that in mind. It's a regional problem and we can be the catalyst for it, but I don't think we should fund it all by ourselves.
Thank you. Laura?
Laura Rose, I would like to just agree with what was said about the street outreach and how skipping that step, something that's really been identified through the task force as something that could make a difference to people who are not able to get other services, to skip that would be, I think, not in our community's interest. And I also see the person who could do street outreach could also help with things like interfaces with the porta-potties between the public and the homeless in general. Things like concerns that businesses have about homeless on their streets or on their property. The street outreach person could be someone who these concerns could be taken to and then delivered to the homeless population. So I'm urging you to fund that. Thank you.
All right. Thoughts, yeah, Jack?
As, as I think of this, I think that the street outreach position is probably the highest priority in my mind for this. I, I'm not sure how to think about, and so I support that, that we do that. With regard to the portable bathrooms, I, I heard what was said about moving them around. One of the things that I think about with the bathrooms is that I don't see that necessarily as an issue just for homeless people. I don't see that necessarily as an issue just for homeless people. I think that in general, cities don't do a good job of providing public bathrooms for people. And, and I can see, see this be a transitional approach to having one or more locations for permanent public bathrooms for people. I know we have, in, in, during the business day, City Hall has public bathrooms, the police station has a public bathroom twenty-four hours a day. But, I think that's probably not enough to meet, meet the need. With regard to the idea of saying, well, let's do a six-month pilot and then see how it goes, if we get through six months and, and we decided it's a success, at that point, we will not have allocated the money for the next six months. So, so it's kind of a tough, tough thing to, to do a six-month pilot in, as part of an annual budget. I, I think that the extension funding for the homeless in the shelter is, is, is pretty, is pretty hard to know where things are going, because I think we have a much bigger question, which is, are we gonna have a partner who is gonna be willing to provide a shelter? I don't think there was ever a commitment that the church would be providing a permanent shelter for the city, and I don't think that we can count on that. So, if we're looking at something other than where the shelter went, where it is now, fifteen thousand dollars is, is a pittance compared to what the need is likely to be. So, I, I support the outreach position, I support the portable bathrooms, I'm awfully vague on the, still on the general responsiveness fund, and so I would like to see more, more detail about that. I talked to Ken Russell, the newly-elected chair of the homelessness task force today, and he wasn't able to be here tonight. But, he also, I expect that he'll be coming next week, and I, I would expect we would have more of, of a discussion of this next, next week when we have our public hear- first public hearing on this. But, I would, I would put something in for this as of tonight.
Would you fully fund the street positions?
Yeah, I would. Yeah. So.
Well, if you take five thousand off, which was an suggestion for the general fund, then it comes to the fifty-one that's up there. If we were to add the fifty-one, I guess I wouldn't wanted to see necessarily committed to these line items, I'd like to have a further discussion. And I'd also like to have a deep discussion before any distribution, 'cause again, we could still use some of this money to try to find matches.
Well, what we see in that column there is forty-one, is that what you were talking about?
Fifteen.
Plus fifteen, so that's fifty-six. Yeah, so.
Well, if, if we just went with the street outreach position and the bathrooms, as you're suggesting, that's a total of thirty-one for, if that, if that sounds, well, that's one possible way we could go.
I think one of the, I'm sorry, Donna, I think one of the stipulations that we put into the ask for the contingency fund or responsiveness fund or whatever it was, that it would be subject to the approval of the council before it was actually spent. I didn't know if that was written into it, or if it was just something that someone had mentioned.
But, but the way that fund was talked about, it's for emergency, when they can't get into housing, they can't get into a shelter, they need transportation. I understood that at least a great portion of it was so to help whoever's in charge of it be able to act right away.
Okay, that's a relatively small portion, I think. That particular usage is something that could be set up in advance. If the entire fund wasn't used, it could be recycled back into the fund. There was talk of having a, like a petty cash fund, but that would be something that I would think that we would look for from other sources. You know, and again, I wouldn't, I don't think we would expect you to fund something like that without knowing what the potential uses and the projected amounts would be beforehand. Again, this is new to all of us in terms of actually getting funding for this, you know, so, so it's hard to say, but.
Thank you, thank you. Connor?
Okay, I'm a zealot on this one, and you already referenced it. And I know the task force would fund these positions probably at like twenty bucks an hour, if they knew we would fund it. But, I just can't justify by the nature of the work that these positions do, that they should be paid less than what we consider a livable wage for our own tax incentive program, which is the lowest-paid worker in Montpelier municipal government there. I, I think if it's worth, worth doing, you pay them a livable wage. And so, I, I would consider, like, again, trying to move this into one position, but make sure we professionalize it. Otherwise, I would call it a stipend, because it's not a job, I think. Somebody making twelve bucks an hour in Montpelier is gonna be homeless on a long enough timeline, if that's their one source of income that they're getting. So, I, I have real discomfort with just paying twelve bucks an hour on this.
So, would you want to keep it, but increase the pay?
One position?
One position at, at what, like, what's the math?
I, I mean, to me, fifteen is the floor, and I don't have a calculator in front of me, but I'd like to see something more like that.
I take it you're not talking about job sharing, you're talking about one person doing the job for a salaried, salaried amount? Okay. I mean, I don't think anybody would turn it down. I think part of it is that the people that you get, who are highly qualified to do it, nobody says, hey, I'm gonna be a street outreach worker and get rich. I mean, people tend to do it because they have a passion for it, or because they, they're able to do it, so they find themselves doing it. And I think for a lot of people, it's more important that it be done than, you know, on the other hand, you're right, you have to survive in order to continue to do it, or there's nobody there to do it, because people are out spending their time getting a decent salary somewhere else. So, it's, but I think it's a balance. And I think that often the people who, who do look at that are gonna be very con- almost more concerned that it gets done than they are that they get a lot of money, she said repetitively. But, anyway, I mean, if you wanted to pay more, I, I don't think anybody would really argue with that.
Right, just worry about setting the precedent for that hourly salary?
Can, can you call it an introductory rate, or a trial period, or a half-rate trial period, or, I don't know.
Well, again, I would call it a stipend, if that's what we're doing, if that's the nature of the work.
Call it a stipend.
You know, anything is better than nothing. And that sounds terrible, doesn't it? But, um, just, just getting it to happen would be really beneficial, I think.
Lauren, do you have any thoughts on this?
I mean, I definitely, I see some logic to, if we're gonna put money in, put in, into a position, 'cause that person would then be, you know, getting paid to be doing this work and sharing information with us on what the most pressing needs are and potential solutions, and potentially have access to knowing what other resources are out there and potential matching things, you know, so it seems like it does bring a, you know, a professionalism to be able to work with a task force, you know, but somebody that can really be focusing on this for the city. So, I, I see a logic to, to starting there potentially, and then seeing, you know, future needs or opportunities for other funding sources and things to supplement what the city could do. I mean, I do kind of go to what Donna was saying of, you know, if we allocate it up to a certain amount without having to say, I, I never read through the budget before, so I don't know how often you do this, but, you know, that, that, because it does seem like there's still a lot of questions, you know, how, who would actually employ that person, is that a contract thing, I don't know where in the city, if that would be a city employee, that seems, I don't know where they'd be housed, or, so it seems like there's a lot of questions to answer, like, we'd probably contract this out.
Right. I mean, I think, and, and I defer to Cameron, as if she has a better idea, 'cause she and I haven't talked about it. But, it does, you know, we don't really have necessarily supervisory capacity to handle it, so I would think we would want, you know, I'm not sure it would be our employee anyway, it would be us partnering with another agency that knows how to do this. It would be my thought.
And one thought is that we, I mean, even if we're gonna contract it out, put out an RFP for, like, who could do this work, is, I mean, we would still, I would assume at that point, put some money in the budget to do that.
Right, we'd have to pay them, right, yeah, yeah.
And, and it's also conceivable that that money could serve as some kind of a match to help leverage other dollars, you know. If, if, let's say, we, you know, put it in at the current rate, that no, you know, anticipating that that's not enough, you know, that that could be a point of, you know, leveraging other dollars. But, I, it's, it's approaching eleven o'clock. I would, excuse me, I would love to have some kind of, like, I think this is the only point about which we don't have a lot of clarity. If we can nail this down, then we can vote on something and be done. Does anyone have a budget number for the homelessness task force, or that, that you would like to propose at this point?
Well, my scribbled numbers, I came up to forty-five thousand, and that was three thousand for the toilets, fifteen for the extended time on the shelter, twenty as seed money for a position, and then the balance being for the contingency fund, or general fund.
I would potentially be for all of that, except for the homeless shelter in that I, there are too many moving pieces there that I am uncomfortable with.
Well, see, I, I guess that's why I was talking about a lump sum, and those, I'm just using the numbers that they gave us, but I, I don't wanna nail this down to being exactly that number, but that's the, the numbers behind my gross number.
Yeah, fair enough. Glenn?
Just as far as the overflow shelter goes, and the uncertainty around whether there, the, the current partners will continue to provide that service that we are assisting with, I, I guess it's not clear to me why we can't put the money in the budget, hoping that that will be the case, that they will continue. It's not that we have to spend the money if one of those partners falls through, is that, is that not true?
At, at least, in my take on that, it's, this is money that we are taxing from the public, and so having, being able to point at where it's going to is important. And for it to, to be going for something that is, got, had some question marks around it, to me seems not the responsible thing to do. But, it could just, it could just sit there, potentially. Or, or not, if it's sort of a lump sum, and we haven't decided what it all goes towards. Other thoughts? On this, on Donna's, what was, what was your?
I offered forty-five thousand.
Forty-five. So, that brings us up to four point two. Are, would you be game for that, would you wanna see it modified?
Um, I was just doing some math on my, on my phone, and the, the proposal for the outreach workers is about eleven dollars and seventy cents an hour, not counting so, any kind of overhead social security or, or anything else. If you consider a full-time, forty-hour work week adds up to two thousand eighty hours per year, if we, if we peg that at fifteen dollars an hour, that's thirty-one thousand two hundred. So, I would, I think I would start with thirty-one thousand two hundred, and then do that at, incorporate that into the figure that Donna raised, which is, which makes it more than forty-five thousand.
It's about eleven thousand dollars more, yeah, you're back up to fifty-one.
You're back up to fifty-six thousand, or whatever, which, and with not paying the, the rec center bond in fiscal two thousand.
Sorry, that's already gone.
Right, I know, but that mean, that gets us to ballpark four point six.
Right, but if you didn't, I mean, I'm just suggesting, but if, you know, if you followed, I mean, one of the issues, I think, maybe, would also with the, and I'm with you, I, I think, obviously, I advocated strongly, actually, for us to extend the shelter season this year, and, and we came up with the money. But, it also, to some extent, we just talked about lobbying the state, and if we're showing their hand that we're gonna pay for it, then, you know, how do we go to them and say, we got no money to, to pay for extending the season, you know, you should be covering this time if, if we're gonna do it. You know, so if you did the, I don't know, the other thing to do is to pick a number that you're comfortable, I think Lauren suggested this a little earlier, and go send it, you know, the tax, task force meets every week, they'll be here next week and say, what, you know, if we gave you forty-five thousand, how would you propose to allocate that? We, we, how would you prioritize that? They are the folks you've asked to look at that.
Bill, real quick point of order, we're not meeting next week, because the state is having their homelessness awareness day, so we're, we're freeing up time for our task force to be at the State House.
Beautiful.
What day is that?
One thing, fifteen.
Okay. Morgan, did you have something to add?
Yes, I'll try to be quick. Morgan Brown District three, and I didn't mention it before, I'm a member of the homelessness task force. In fact, I was voted vice chair today. All right, so, what you're discussing right now is the twenty-twenty-one budget requests from the homelessness task force.
Right.
I'd like to remind the city council that there are also the twenty-twenty budget requests for the initial funding of the bathrooms and the lockers.
Yes, we would take that up another time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, Donna, your proposal was forty-two, is that right?
Forty-five.
Forty, sorry, forty-five. And Jack, you would make that more like fifty-six?
Fifty-six, something, yeah.
Other thoughts? What, what, where are you at? Go ahead.
I'm with Jack, fifty-six.
Connor?
I'd, I'd like to see what the task force could do with forty-five. I realize that the time's not syncing up well, but this is kind of a big one. I don't know if they could meet again next week or something, but this, this is the culmination of everything we're doing, so I, I think it makes sense to, to the sense of what they want.
Lauren?
Yeah, I guess I would also be interested to see with a forty-five thousand budget, what they'd come back with.
Okay. Yeah, no, I, I'm definitely more on the, the forty-five end. I, I really like the idea of having seed money for the out, street outreach position, and seeing what we could do to get some matching grants, get some partners, because that's, again, this is new, this is not, you know, something that we know how to do really yet. So, that and, yeah, so anyway, that's, that's where I'm at, and that, I think, takes us to four point two, which is, you know, more than I would really like. I mean, if it were, if it were up to me, it actually, I, I know, I'm gonna be the stingy one here, I would have been proposing something less. But, I, but if that's where, if that's where we're at, then that is it. And it's really the, I mean, the, one of the biggest chunks of, of the, the additional stuff here, it's, it's really, it's really the, the homelessness task force that's pushing us sort of.
And the CBPSA, which is new.
And the CBPSA, that's, that's true. It's pushing us sort of over the edge. So, okay, so we have potentially a budget here. I would, if, if, yeah. I would, if, yes, Jack?
I should just point out one thing that isn't reflected in these figures yet, which is that we, unless there's, we don't know what petitions are going to come in, but we just saved almost $6,000 in the Montpelier Community Fund appropriation, because we plugged it in at 137.
But we'd already made that adjustment in the budget before tonight.
Oh, okay.
Good try, Jack.
I'm, I'm using the previous version of the spreadsheet.
Can I just ask a procedural question? Would you all be comfortable getting response from the homelessness task force on the 23rd? Would that be okay? Well, sure, I think we're, we should vote on a budget tonight, and we can always adjust it. Okay. But, so, you know, whether or not we hear further detail from them, great, but that's where we're at. Yes?
I really need to go to the restroom. So do we have to vote? Are we going to vote on this, or was it not enough?
Well, I, I think we should have a vote. I think we need a, I think we need a vote.
Hurry up.
Sorry, okay, yeah, fair. Is there a motion regarding this budget as it currently stands?
Do you want to go out and do that and come back?
No, 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 let's do, no, Thomas, let's do it.
Is there a motion?
So moved. I moved the proposed budget.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you, and we can change it, go ahead, from this point, but at least we have a place to start.
The one...
Yes, go ahead, Jack.
Just make one observation. When we came in with, with the very scary health insurance increases at the beginning of this process, there was a lot of offline discussion about what should we be doing with the, with our budget, and there was a lot of discussion of, well, maybe with that increase, what we should be doing is status quo and nothing more. And, and this isn't much above status quo, so I, I don't feel like we're being irresponsible with, with our money if we, if this is where we wind up.
Okay. All right, so we are, we're moving on, we've made it through our agenda. Council reports, we're not going to start with Donna. Maybe we'll come back. Connor, do you have?
I'll pass.
Glenn?
I'll be at Baguio's tomorrow, 8:30 to 9:30. And I have recently been to the Wood Gallery for board meetings there, they're doing well. Head down there soon for an exhibition by Peter Schuman of Bread and Puppet this month. I can't remember the opening date, but look on their website. And I've also been recently at Another Way, which also continues to be a wonderful place. We've been talking a lot about the new, newly-open transit center, the shifts in the bus routes, and I think I will have more to say about that at a later date, but not tonight. Thank you.
Jack?
The main thing I want to say is that we, all of us on the council received an email the other day, and it's been in the news that Chief Fakos has announced his retirement, and I just, we will have a chance to honor him before he leaves, but I want to recognize the great professionalism he's brought to the job over, over decades and, and thank him for his service.
Only thing I wanted to mention was the Montpelier representative to the central Vermont Solid Waste Management District had to resign, so if anybody is interested, I am the alternate, and I would love to stay the alternate. If any Montpelier resident is interested in applying for that, please do so, it will be posted at some point soon and advertised, but it would be great to get somebody representing our city really actively on that. Thanks.
I also, oh, Donna?
No, I passed.
Oh, you passed, okay, all right. I also want to thank the chief, you know, in light of his retirement in July, and thank you for all your good work, and gosh, we have a, quite a process now to try to find someone to fill your shoes, and so that's going to be a tough process, but we're really grateful for your years of service, so. So there's that. I also just wanted to report that we had a great meeting last night, as has been mentioned, with the REC Center public meeting, getting information out. I thought that was really valuable, really well-attended, great feedback, great questions. So that was, that was, I think, a success. Done. John?
I'll pass.
Bill?
I will not be long either, so I was going to acknowledge the chief as well. Also note that actually officially now, as of December 31, Jeff Byer has retired, as has Tom McCardle. We've talked about those, so we certainly thank them for their service, and we will have a challenge coming up, and also officially this week, Kelly Murphy, who is here, is now officially our finance director and working, and Jasmine Lamb, some of you have met at City Hall, and we're very fortunate that Jamie and Todd are still around helping transition that. So more to come on all of those things, and it's too late to talk about anything else.
True.
Well, other than Jeff had a nice party at the Culture Center over at the garage. It was really nice.
And I think something's in the works for Tom.
Great, good.
Stay tuned.
Okay. All right, so without objection, we're going to consider this meeting adjourned.